Good evening, everyone. It is now seven thirty-one. Tonight is the planning zoning. The planning zoning meeting. It's tonight, we have a general meeting and we have a public hearing first and a general meeting after. Tonight, we have Stephen O'Vanny and Fred Donait in town hall in room two oh six or two thirteen. And this meeting is to balance the meetings being conducted via go-to meeting in virtual form via the governor's order. I think we have, yep, carriagettes, you're fantastic. We have all commissioners present. All right. So without further ado, we're going to get right into it. First time our agenda is continuation of public here regarding proposed amendments to Darian zoning regulations. E O Z R number four. Twenty dash twenty twenty site plan review application number one twenty eight B as in boy. Special permit application number three fourteen comma seven eleven comma Inc. At three oh six Boston Coach Room. I'm not going to read the whole item. As I I've kind of actually lost count. But this application, I think, was filed in August of last year, which was. And we're probably going to finish it. In the next two weeks, which is in spring. So we went about nine months. Bye bye, man. Um, tonight, the the plan is to close the public hearing. Um, tonight, after the applicant finishes their. The public summation, if that's the proper word. And any more public comment that wants to come in. I know Attorney Sutchen's has got documents she sent to us on March eleventh. And you can go for that. Welcome, Ms. Sutchen's. Thank you for coming back again. And I also want to give a quick shout out to you. Our entire commission took the seven hours of Connecticut law training. And you were the first presenter, I think, and taught us about. Plan of conservation development plans and how you put them into action. Did a great job. We love your kitchen.
Actually finished. Thank you.
It's how it looks like it's brand new.
It's 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 been a long time in incoming, but yes, thank you. Great. And I very much appreciate all of you in attendance. We had, you know, slightly off topic, but we had frankly record attendance in the virtual format. And I think what we've been hearing was that it was very successful for the commission members who attended. Because it was frankly, a lot easier for you to attend in the comfort of your homes. And, you know, pay attention to the parts when you needed to. And if there was something about another applicant or another commission, you could you could skip out on that. So I think we've gotten some great feedback. And again, I appreciate all of you attending.
Yeah, great. The the feedback I heard, there was six hundred fifty people.
Yeah, that's that was about right. That was, I think, the max that we had. Typically, we've been room capacity at about a little over four hundred, maybe four twenty-five. So we obviously were able to accommodate a much larger number by going to the virtual format.
Fantastic. You should thank George Riley. He was your local marketing expert.
Great.
Thank you.
Great. So turning to the topic at hand. For the record, Amy Sutchen's here representing seven eleven. As Mr. Alveany noted, we've been, our application was filed back in August. And we started this public hearing process in September. So since then, we've had a lot of testimony about a wide variety of topics of what I wanted to do this evening. We do have our team members available if there are specific questions. But what I wanted to do, frankly, we're going to hear a lot from me. With sort of a recap of the issues that are before you, the applications that are before you. The various details that I think we talked a lot about in depth early on, some that we've talked about like traffic much more recently. And try to sum up where we are. And so with that, I did know, as you noted, I did submit a letter last week with a couple of. Additional issues or conditions of approval. And I will address those at some point, most of them during the presentation. And then also highlight, as I said, a couple of the other things that we've, over the the course of the public hearing, mentioned. In the process. So where I wanted to start was frankly, with something that we have not touched on in several months, which is the regulation amendment. And was the the subject of what I noted in the attachment to the letter that I sent last week. Which was, you know, way back in nineteen ninety-seven. When the commission was approving what was then a Texaco station. Attorney David Sherwood had compiled a memo that was incorporated into that approval. That talked about how convenience stores were becoming a generally accepted accessory use in the. You know, in the gas station context. And so I think what the regulation amendment that's before you is intended to address is frankly, that, as I said at the very outset of this hearing. The evolution in the gas station market that has occurred, you know, over the last twenty to twenty, twenty to thirty years. Since your regulation has last been amended. Um, I think one of the things that, as you know, from that memo, you know, as it said, it talks about, you know, some of the Texaco stations at the time and the percentage. How that have accessory retail uses. And I think frankly undermines the some of the arguments that Attorney Maslin and Attorney Gleason have made about this being. Equally, you know, principal use. On the site along with the gas station. I will also note that we have, as I noted in the letter, that we have stated during the hearing and would agree to a condition of approval. As exists in many of the other gas station approvals in town, that the gas station not be. Is the the principal use and not the store cannot operate without the gas station. Excuse me, without the gas station in operation. So it does not sort of convert into a, you know, primary, the the store doesn't become the primary use on the site. Um, I also think that the proposal in the regulations is consistent with your P O C D. And the S B zone for this type of use. It's frankly, it's something that fits quite well within the idea of the service business district. And the type of. Use that you want along those those corridors. And I do think that there is a great deal of merit in the regulation amendment, even putting aside this particular application. Even if you were frankly to disagree that we should be granted a special permit. I do think that the regulation amendment does have a great deal of benefit to. Not only you as a town who haven't updated that regulation in quite a while, but also to a number of the other existing business owners. In town, because it frankly allows them opportunities for frankly, clarifications of the existing regulations. And modernization of of their facilities, you know, which which generally happen from time to time. You know, most importantly, the regulation differentiates between gas stations and repair facilities. Those are licensed differently by the state of Connecticut. There's two different sets of licenses you get as a gas station versus a repair. Many of the facilities in town that offer both have both. But I do think there's a reason to differentiate them in your regulations, not only because the state does so. But frankly, there's some very practical reasons for that. Split, which is, you know, as as an example, your current regulations require. A space, space on the site for disabled vehicle storage, even if you are not providing. Vehicle repair or providing towing. It's it's worded as a shell. It's not always been applied that way when you look at the approvals that have been issued over the years. But in fact, the the language itself does say that that would be mandatory. The other important component in a modern gas station is that this amendment unambiguously allows self-service stations. Right now, there's a little bit of ambiguity in your regulations as to whether you need to have some component of full service gasoline. Or whether it can just be self-storage. And the regulation amendment also clarifies the parking requirements for each of the use. Your regulation currently has a certain amount of, you know, fourteen spaces at least for the automotive services. But then allows the commission to decide on a case-by-case basis of what the appropriate amount of parking is. I think that could technically run afoul of uniformity and other provisions. And so clarifying the regulate, clarifying the regulation to be specific as to parking for each particular use like we proposed. Does does provide not only clarity to those using it. It also clarifies things for for this board and the staff in addressing. You know, anybody's with an existing facility or anybody else that would be coming in for either repair or or a gas station, gas station use. So with the regulation as as setting the tone, I wanted to walk you through a few of the overall site comments and site revisions that we've made. To the application since it was initially submitted in August. Most importantly, we have satisfied all of the comments that we received from Ty and Bond, who was your peer reviewer on the. Civil engineering side, there were revisions made to stormwater and other issues. Those have all been addressed. We made modifications to the building as originally proposed. If you remember, it was substantially different entrance and design. That was in designed to accommodate or modified to accommodate a number of the comments that we got from the architectural review board back in the fall. As well as Mr. Fletcher, the owner of the adjacent office building. Who asked that we can make some modifications. So some of the mechanical equipment was was less visible from from his property. We provided the necessary lighting specifications and some details to make sure that. That the canopy lighting was properly recessed as the as the chairman had asked for. We explained our delivery processes and methodology. I explained that as a corporate owned facility, you know, we had control over the as-needed, you know, deliveries. And have also included in my. Excuse me, my letter from last week that, as we had stated, I think it was during the last public hearing. That the we would agree that any delivery vehicles exiting the site need to make a right turn only, that they would not be allowed to make the left turn. So we've included that as a proposed condition of approval. We spent a great deal of time going through the industry-leading safety considerations that we have incorporated on site. With respect to lighting, staffing, our internal procedures in response to a number of questions that we received on on that topic. We removed a parking, one of the parking spaces just at the entrance. That was one of Mike Galante's early comments with respect to the site layout. To ensure that there was no vehicle that was backing up and potentially blocking the entrance to the site. So we removed that. And relatedly, in his final comment letter, Mr. Galante also raised a question about. Access to the loading and trash removal area. What we would agree to is that those spaces directly in front of that, there are three. Would be designated for employee-only parking. That would obviously facilitate if there was a time where. Somebody needed to access that loading. It's within our control. Our employee could be notified and just, you know, go out and move their move their car. And we think, although we think that that's not going to be an issue for the operations here. Given his comment, we would be willing to willing to do that. And with respect to the issue of, as I said, with respect to. Attorney Maslin and Attorney Gleason's comments. There were a number of comments that related to the outdoor storage area that we proposed for the for the firewood. As well as, as I had noted in the in the regulation discussion. The whether the commercial sales and quick service restaurant would be deemed to be sort of co-equal primary uses on the property. And as noted in both the regulation amendment and the existing regulations. We have applied for the automobile, excuse me, automobile service use under section seven fifty-three G of the special of the service business zone. We've not applied for multiple principal uses under that section. And the amendments, as they relate to the motor vehicle service use, all tie into that section and ten fifty-six. So I think the argument that we are somehow trying to make those, you know, related. Or or, as I said, equal principal uses is frankly unfounded. And as we said, consistent with that representation, have agreed to that condition of approval that. Exists in a number of the other. Other facilities in town. With respect to traffic considerations, I think there were a number of comments in the public. That the traffic studies, both by Mr. Adams and Mr. Galante, were bought and paid for and should somehow be deemed. You know, not credible, despite, you know, as Mr. Mr. Chairman noted, you know, a nine-month process. Um, you know, the, no one in the public has ever brought forward their own expert. You know, licensed professional traffic engineer in the state of Connecticut, or frankly, even outside of Connecticut. That has disputed the process and conclusions reached by Mr. Galante and Mr. Adams. I think the idea that the accusation that's been made, that there has been changing data throughout the process. I think is also baseless, because frankly, it's the the entire point of a peer review. The process, as happened with the, you know, between Bowler and Ty and Bond. Is to have another professional with expertise in the same area, look at the plans, offer qualified. And educated comments in that industries, you know, with respect to industry standards and evaluate those. And the entire peer review process gets you to, you know, a better, a better outcome. Because multiple people are reviewing it. And sort of inherent in that process is that there may be some changes to the data in response to or to the movements. Or calculations in order to respond to those questions that were. That were raised. With respect to the left turn of the site, not only has Mr. Galante. Sorry, I hear I hear other people speaking. Um, Mr. Galante's testimony is that he has take, he personally has taken a left out of the site. There's no limitation. And in fact, I, Fred, if I could share my screen. We tracked down a copy of the. Night, original nineteen seventy-six site plan approval for. The original Duchess location. Hold on a second. I'm just trying to pull it up. And in fact, what it appears has happened was that those. Should be able to share. Can you see the site plan? Or not yet?
No, not yet, Amy.
Okay, hold on, sorry. It's showing. Yeah, I was going to say it's giving, it's trying to share my. Screenshot of what I'm seeing on the screen for the meeting. Hold on.
You should have, you should have the ability to show the screen, Amy.
Yeah, that's that's what I'm doing. I think, okay, here's what it is. I think I figured out what the problem was. Now you should be able to see it. Sorry about that. Um, so as you can see, as I said, this is the original nineteen seventy-six site plan for the Duchess Development. Pre-drive-through, which turns out was approved in approximately nineteen ninety-five. And as you'll see right here at the entrance, there were directional entrance and exit signs that were shown in this site plan. And they are, if I scroll over, consistent with what you see in the sort of the design that you see on the site. Our best guess, based on Mr. Galante's ability. The fact that neither he nor Mr. Adams have located any information in any kind of D O T or other traffic approval. There's no pavement markings otherwise. We think these signs were just installed incorrectly. They are in the same approximate location. And they, you know, the designs just a little different, but that is why they were shown. And, you know, most importantly, on, you know, they do show even as late as as or as early as nineteen seventy-six. That there's no limitation on a left, left turn out of the site. So we do believe, as I said, consistent with the testimony that. Mr. Galante and Mr. Adams have given to you that those are, you know, full, full movement opportunities. And there's, you know, the the site that is there is is simply guidance signage, not mandatory. Traffic control type signage. So then with respect to. That we've, you know, Mr. Galante's testimony was also that he has discussed the site with D O T. Mr. Adams has discussed the site with D O T. They have looked at a number of the the considerations that have come up in the recent weeks. With all of you and and with the Z B A, which I will discuss. And including the police commission and Mr. Galante's conclusion. Is that these intersections at I ninety-five would likely need review even without this application. I think that's an important consideration. And also, when you look at the overall facts, I think there are a couple of key points that I want to highlight. First of all, all of the accounts that, as you've heard from both of the experts, was that the traffic counts that were taken. Were adjusted for for COVID conditions with fewer people on the road. And that was done, as I said, in consultation with D O T. The peer review process itself, as I explained with respect to the the argument about changing data. Ensures that this was, you know, not just Mr. Adams' best opinion, but in fact, involved. The input from Mr. Galante. You, I know that maybe Mr. Adams is not as familiar of a face to you and maybe does not have, you know, the same. Record of applications before you, but certainly I think you understand that that Mr. Galante. Has been before you a number of times, is is certainly a credible traffic expert. And, you know, the fact that he and Mr. Adams reached agreement about the conclusions and the movements here. I think demonstrates that the conditions that are would be proposed as a result of the seven eleven. Will not create detrimental impacts, as you heard over the course of the last couple of weeks. You know, there's a lot of concern with traffic coming to the site off of I ninety-five. In fact, what the actual fact is, is that the estimate is that this will be one car every four minutes. Frankly, I've probably been talking about traffic for just about four minutes. So this is certainly not, you know, a constant stream of vehicles that are coming off I ninety-five because of the. Seven eleven proposal. And ultimately, you know, the the comments that we received from the police commission. I think Mr. Mr. Adams spent a great deal of time rebutting those at the at the last meeting. Mr. Galante's testimony is that the police commission letter mischaracterized his testimony in part. The conclusions that the police commission. Reached, I think frankly, were unfounded for the level of traffic that will be generated by this development. And most importantly, with its location on a state road, despite even the consultation with D O T thus far. Ultimately, if approved, we would need to move forward with D O T and obtain an encroachment permit. From the D O T that obviously involves a review of the the traffic considerations, both raised by. Mr. Adams, as well as Mr. Galante. And, you know, their final review on any modifications or conditions upon which they would issue. A encroachment permit. If ultimately, they decided that they were uncomfortable with this situation. We could get through this process successfully with you and still ultimately be denied by D O T with respect to. An encroachment permit. We we don't think that's the case. I think based on all the comments that we've heard to date in all the consultation. As as Mr. Adams and Mr. Galante have have expressed to you that it appears that D O T, having reviewed. Not only the the data that we've provided, they have recently. As as Mr. Adams testified last, at the last meeting. They have recently updated the reviewed and made improvements to the intersection. They have installed the crosswalk adjacent to, you know, right by Birch Road as part of that process. And it's, you know, it's our understanding that, you know, they they have no significant issues with the. Functioning of this area of the post-road. And that any any improvements that have that were necessary have been made in in the course of that. Course of that review. The last, I think, the other item that has occurred since the last time we met was the Z B A's decision. As I think you probably know, the the Z B A denied our application for location approval. As well as variances related to the to the signage. Think the straightforward issue with respect to this to the signage is what I reflected in the letter from last week. Which is that we are not asking for any approval on the signage that's depicted in the building elevations. And would obviously agree to a condition of approval that any signage on the site would need to be separately approved. In accordance with your your regulations. Ultimately, what what would be required here is custom design signage that would take far longer than than we have available to us. Before we need to close this public hearing. So we would be with with the denial of those variances. We would need to, you know, additional time to to review that and so would agree to do it as a separate process. With respect to the location approval, I don't think it has any bearing on your decision. Because it is under an entirely different set of criteria. The Z B A in acting on the location approval. Is not looking at zoning considerations. They are looking at the suitability of the site as a gas station under, as as I said, as an arm of the state of Connecticut. Through the Department of Consumer Protection, actually. And so the issues that are edit, that are in involved in the Z B A denial, frankly, don't overlap with zoning. And frankly, we think that a number of the considerations that they that they gave. Including the fact that they they failed to recognize the significance of the fact that there were applications pending before this board. That would make the plan compliant with the zoning regulations was was erroneous. We are currently evaluating our options for an appeal of that decision. And still have a couple of weeks to to make that decision. But again, as I said, we do think that there are a number of errors that were made in the in the course of the the Z B A decision. And and then with respect to conditions of approval or conditions that we've raised during the course of the public hearing. I direct you back to the memo that we. during the course of the public hearing, uh, I direct you back to the memo that we provided uh, on November nineteenth that addressed, um, a couple of items that were um, highlighted during the course of the, uh, testimony to that date. Uh, specifically that we would agree that we could not sell beer or other alcoholic beverages, um, as a condition of our operation at the site. As you know, we had proposed this facility to be a twenty-four hour operation. Uh, I noted in my letter last week that in light of the, the comments that we've received, um, we are, excuse me, uh, willing to limit the hours of operation from five AM to midnight. Uh, we, we do think there's a, a demand for, um, you know, early morning or later night commuters uh, and others in the vicinity, um, you know, somebody leaving a at, at some point, we will go back to in-person meetings and classes and things like that. So we would expect that um, students at, uh, Norwalk Community College maybe, you know, may stop and get gas or somebody commuting home from New York City um, would stop and get gas, um, or, you know, step into the store. So we do think that those um, hours do allow us to, to meet the demand that we see, uh, in the marketplace there. And, you know, but, but still try to accommodate some of the, the concerns that were raised um, by the, by the commission, uh, during, during the course of the, um, hearing. And then relatedly, uh, there had been a discussion at the, you know, earlier sessions about the final floor plan of the building and included a condition about the uh, issue of ensuring that there are no displays that block the window from, you know, any of the windows along the, the, the side fronting the, the gas pumps. Um, because as I, as we discussed, those are all movable, um, and there was a lot of discussion. We included the condition of approval as suggested by the chairman that these could, um, you know, the final floor plan could be reviewed by staff prior to a, uh, CO to ensure that, uh, there was no uh, display or anything else that, that exceeded, uh, thirty-six inches and blocked any kind of visibility, um, from the site. And then, uh, with respect to the, um, uh, propane or ice, our November memo did note that all of that and, and the site plan had been updated to reflect that uh, propane would be in a secure cage, uh, it's on the loading side of the building, as you'll recall. Uh, ice is exclusively inside the building and any seasonal merchandise would be uh, brought in at night. Obviously, all of that would be, um, you know, as raised as a, as a condition, uh, excuse me, would be imposed as a condition of approval. Um, so with um, so with that, I, I think the conclusion uh, and the task before you is to assess, as I stated at the end of the last meeting, the task is to assess the merits of the application based on the use, which is a gas station with accessory, uh, retail and quick service uh, restaurant, not the user, which is seven eleven. Um, as I, I, you know, I went into a little bit of depth at the last meeting, but, uh, as you probably also heard at the, the seminar, um, your obligation, that's your obligation under Connecticut law. Uh, many of the public comments that had been received were very much user-specific. Um, so discussion about the app, about other seven eleven locations that are currently pending for approval, other store models that seven eleven may have in other parts of the country. Um, frankly, all of those are, um, irrelevant to your consideration, um, of the use. Uh, you know, regardless of whether this is used, um, you're, you're, you're being asked to approve a gas station. And if the user is seven eleven or Cumberland Farms, uh, the mobile station across the street could buy the site and operate it, or somebody else um, in town could decide to, uh, you know, buy this, buy this, uh, you know, buy an approval from seven eleven and operate the station. So it's not, uh, tied to um, seven eleven. And I think it's, you know, critically important for you to recognize that you need to think about the public comment that you received and how much of it was, uh, frankly, relevant to a gas station consideration versus the consideration of the ultimate, um, uh, whether or not this is seven eleven as a user. I also think, oh, sorry.
No, when you're done.
Um, I think the other and, and final important point here is that you also need to think critically about the, uh, public comment that you that you received over the course of this night, uh, excuse me, over the course of the hearing. Um, there were, um, a number of comments that you received, um, you know, that frankly, uh, you know, seemed, we we had two nights of public hearing, uh, back in September and October, where frankly, there was very little public outcry about, um, you know, what this use was and whether it was appropriate. And frankly, a lot of, a lot of specious comments. And then there was, um, you know, what seemed to be, as you'll recall, in uh, early November, a, a slew of public comments. And I think it's important for you, as you go into this deliberation, to understand where those, um, comments came from. Because frankly, um, what they were was, uh, not from members of the public, but in fact, opposition competitors in the marketplace who decided to fear monger. These are signs that were posted, um, at the mobile station across the street. And as you can see, what they did was highlight the fact that there was a body found outside of seven eleven in some undisclosed location, news breaking, police vehicles. And these were actually, you know, there was, these were posted on each of the, um, uh, pumps at the station and then also, uh, addressed, you know, they, they then brought up what's next, McDonald's, Walmart, Burger King, Dollar General, obviously nothing.
Attorney, are these even in the record?
I am submitting them to the record now. Because I think it's important for you in the course of your deliberations.
Like, I never considered them, never saw them.
Correct, which is why right, which is why I'm saying to you.
Like, who knows where that came from? I never saw them. They were never in the public comment. They were never submitted to this record. You're submitting it.
I am, I am.
An attorney Sutjans is the one submitting those and we don't know where they came from. There's been no foundation for where they were created or who created them.
And what I am saying to you is that when you look at the, um, opposition and I can show you exactly, um, right here, I think you can see my
for who was, who created those documents and that it was by opposition. They were never submitted to this record.
They, they are being submitted to this record now. The public hearing is I am using, yes, and I am using in rebuttal to show that they were posted at the mobile station directly across the street from us.
Are you referring to what you're rebutting?
The fact that rather than compete in the marketplace, our neighbor decided they are posted on a competitor's, competitor neighbor's property.
What they want, correct?
I, I agree with that. They are allowed to post whatever they want.
And those signs to the record here.
Mrs. Gately, I'm happy to
Where, or Commissioner Gately, were those posters that you just submitted to the record?
Yes.
Needed by competitors to this forum.
I am submitting them. They were not, but as you can see from this photo, they were posted on their property. They, I am offering them to show you the context in which
Right to put at their property signs that they want.
Yes. I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with that. I am saying to you that rather than compete in the marketplace, they have chosen to, to post on their, or allowed to be posted on their site, frankly, inflammatory signs designed to draw public opposition to an application that had merit, but was, they saw as a competitor. In the zoning context, competitors do not have Commissioner Gately, I was trying to answer your question. Could you please repeat yourself? Because otherwise I cannot.
I certainly can. Those, as you characterize them, inflammatory signs were never presented and made a part of this record and were never going to be. I had never seen them. I can speak for myself as a commissioner. I had never seen what you just presented. So they were never part of the public record. They were not, never part of the record that would have been considered by the commission. And I had never seen them and would never have considered such things, especially since I hadn't seen them. And so you are rebutting something that was not part of the record. And I think that should be clear.
No, I am not. What I am rebutting is the fact.
You made a part of the public record, not
Could I, could I conclude my comment?
Sure.
Thank you. What I am saying and what I offered about these documents was that these documents, these documents, they are documents. These documents were posted on a competitor's property across the street from ours. I admit, somebody else could have posted them, but they were posted on our property, excuse me, on the
Property.
I, I just said, excuse me, because I was trying to correct my statement.
I mean, you're saying these aren't true.
I, I appreciate that you don't find me credible. I don't know that
No, 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 no. Excuse me, excuse me. Now I'm going to clear my name. I don't find you not credible. You just stated something that is factually inaccurate. They weren't posted on They were not posted on your applicant's property, to my, to my knowledge.
I, no, and I was in the middle was trying to correct myself. If you could let me finish, I can make the statement, but you repeatedly interrupt me and I can't finish my statement and answer your question. With all due respect, I am trying to answer your question, but if you change the question in the middle of the question, like it's cross-examination, I can't answer you. So I'm happy to let you answer your question, but you also need to give me the courtesy of letting me respond.
Thanks. Go ahead, go ahead, Amy. I'm sorry.
Thank you. So my point was, was that we had two nights of public hearing at which there was no public comment. And then there was sudden public outcry. And these, it is our belief, and that is why I am bringing it to the commission's attention, that this public outcry was generated by our opposition posting or allowing to be posted inflammatory signs on their property that frankly mischaracterized our application in order to generate public comment that was intended to create an anti-competitive field. They see us as a competitor. And rather than I said, as compete in the marketplace, because zoning, because in the zoning context, competitors have been found to not have a grievance based solely on the competitive nature of their concerns, that's why we believe these signs were posted. And that's why I think you, the commission needed to be aware of, of the fact that these signs were posted in public locations in the immediate vicinity and all of the neighbors that have come out and spoke, spoken are all in the, mostly in the immediate vicinity of this site. I am simply including them in order to demonstrate where we believe the public outcry came from.
Thank you for clarifying. I appreciate your clarification and your clearing up the record that it was not posted on your applicant's property and that it was not made pu- part of this public record by anyone but the applicant themselves and that it's just your belief that that is where the public all of a sudden became concerned with this application. But it's just your belief. There is no other evidence to support that contention, correct?
Other than the fact that it would not make any logical sense for a member of the public information to the record. Yes, it is.
They might have gotten bit because it was noticed in the paper. Public hearings were noticed.
Correct. We had two public hearings.
I just want to clear record. Thank you.
Understand. So with that in mind, I think this, as I said, we believe that the public outcry was truly generated and caused by a number of the competing business owners. Um, there was a similar sign posted on the BP property. I'm happy to include it, but I think uh, it's completely not necessary, uh, at this point. But as I said, I think the fact that the, um, this, this was, you know, there was, there was clear comment from, um, you know, this, this Smart Foods is Attorney Maslin's client. Um, Mr. Kronberg at the Exxon Station, uh, spoke. Um, and there were, uh, Mr. Fox from the, the Automobile Gas Station Owners Group. Uh, were all, uh, you know, frankly, creating a lot of speculation and uh, baseless comments in the record. We've provided information about how we intend to operate, what we anticipate deliveries to be, and they have, um, tried to respond with frankly, what is speculation about how they think we are going to, going to operate. Um, and I think more importantly, when you're evaluating, again, the public comment with respect to uh, the nature of this application, I, I think it's important for you to, uh, evaluate in the context of uh, that the comments you received in distinguishing, as I said earlier, the use versus the user, um, a number of the comments and, and frankly motives behind, uh, a number of the public uh, uh, speculation that with respect to the proposed clientele of not only the seven eleven, but frankly, any gas station. Um, I think when you, when you look back at those comments, some of which I highlighted at the last meeting, uh, they were not only highly derogatory, but bordering on reprehensible. I mean, there were, there were comments about riffraff from Norwalk and Bridgeport, uh, whether a bodega would be next. Um, you know, the, the type of people that, you know, the, these, the people coming to the site are the people that the police chief is warning us about, and that's why he's requiring us to, you know, reminding us to lock our cars. And there would be loitering at the site, uh, because this is the kind of location. And I think it's really important for you to, uh, you know, evaluate this application on its merits and not give those comments any credence whatsoever. Because it's just, as I said, um, frankly, not only are they, they derogatory, I think they're just well outside, uh, you know, what your jurisdiction is in evaluating, uh, this application. Uh, so with, with that, if there are any questions, uh, you know, or comments with respect to, uh, you know, what we've proposed, uh, you know, whether it's with respect to modifications that have been made over the, the course, the, the draft of the regulation, um, or any other conditions uh, that we've outlined, uh, that would conclude our presentation, uh, and we would ask for your uh, approval of all of the applications.
Uh, thank you, Mrs. Sutjans, um, Ms. Sutjans, I'm sorry. Um, what, what I'm going to do, what I want to do now is what I, um, call around the horn and go through the commissioners and see if they have any, um, any last comments. Um, I've got a list of items that I just want to make sure that, that make it into record or clarified for the record. Um, but I'm going to save my, um, little speech to last. Um, and, and I was going to ask George Riley if you want to go first, because you've got us in that Um, and, and I was going to ask George Riley if you want to go first because you've got us in that um, law class. And then followed with Karen Gately, and then I think it's a good idea.
I, I appreciate that deference, but actually I, I um, I don't have anything at this point. I'm, I'm fine.
Okay. Then the next up would be Kara, and then after Kara, I'd ask um, Larry Warble. And then if any other questions get answered, maybe some things come off my list. So Kara, go ahead.
Um, so Amy, uh, sorry, Attorney Sutgens, despite um, your sort of issues with me, um, I would like to thank you for yet another well researched and thorough presentation. Um, I do believe, you know, I re-listened to some of the meetings that I unfortunately had to miss due to family issues. But I think, you know, you've gone over a few things very thoroughly, and I think maybe because I've heard a few meetings today in anticipation that I had missed in anticipation of this meeting, they're sort of very fresh in my mind. So I want to thank you again for your always thoroughly researched and prepared presentations. I do want to start off by addressing though, your sort of rebuttals um, and mischaracterization uh, and comments made by members of the Darien public and residents of the town. Um, members and volunteers on the ARB and on the police commission. You know, I feel very strongly that we are a board of elected officials. And so, and these are public hearings, and the public has a right to be heard on these matters. It's especially poignant this week. You know, for you to be sort of disparaging, not you personally, but maybe, you know, as a representative of the applicant, to be disparaging the, the members of the public who feel strongly and want to comment on an application before them. It's not just a simple application. It's an application, a special permit application, a multiple regulatory changes, variances, and a location, you know, a, application, a location, a site location application. So I mean, this is not a simple little thing the public wouldn't be interested in. And I think in today's day and age, the public has a right to be heard on a lot of, on any matter that affects them or may potentially affect them. And so I just want to, for the record, just make that clear. And I appreciate you pointing out that some of the comments and written submissions and written, you know, testimony that was submitted, you know, in written form versus being publicly, you know, testified to because of time constraints. They have the right to submit it. They have the right for it to be heard, whether it be heard, you know, verbally or we read it. That doesn't mean necessarily that it will be considered i- if what they touch on is outside the realm of the factors we can consider. So I appreciate you raising that. But obviously, we were just trained and you were one of the, you know, members of the esteemed staff or the esteemed, you know, members of the Connecticut Bar that trained us, uh, which was wonderful. Um, but like, we already knew that, you know, but I, it was good to have it reinforced and to have it, you reminded, even if we already understood it. Um, but yeah, some of the comments were not appropriate, were not something that we would consider and not something that necessarily members of the town or others would express themselves feel that way, right? It's not any town, it's not a unified mass of think tank thought, right? Like people have different points of view. So members of, individual members of the public are allowed to give their opinion. It doesn't mean it's going to be, you know, like, ooh, right, thanks for bringing that up. If it's outside the realm of the factors we are as a board and a commission supposed to consider. So I just want that put out there that they have the right to be heard, they have the right to speak. And, but that doesn't mean that what they submit and what is testified to, if it's outside the factors and outside the criteria that as a commission, we are permitted and should consider, that we're going to consider it. So I think that needs to be clarified. Um.
And I would agree with you.
Thank you for raising it. But I wish it had been done in a way that wasn't so disparaging to the members of this community that your applicant wants to be a part of. Like, I, I don't know. I find that, I find that interesting. Anyway, um, as to Mr. Galante, the ARB and the police commission, the ARB and the police commission, they are made up of volunteers who serve the town, just like hundreds of boards throughout and commissions throughout the state voluntarily. You're getting paid right now. Most of us here, the, the majority of us, but for a handful are not. And we are doing this and taking time away from families, jobs, and other things to be here to serve our communities. So I think disparaging other volunteer commissions, whether they be consulting commissions or likewise, it to me is troubling. And I think what those boards say, even if they're consulting boards, should be considered. I'm not saying they have any authority or right to like, you know, put applicants through the wringer. They don't. But uh, you know, they're volunteers, they're normally experts in their fields. They know, they have a lot of subject matter expertise, and it should be respectfully considered and not disparaged, especially in a forum where they're not here to address it. And, and I get it, you're laying a groundwork for your appeals, but you know, still like i- it, it, those boards are volunteers and they're doing what they're supposed to be doing. Um, Mr. Galante, I would just say the traffic, you know, everyone, uh, the traffic conditions and the traffic reports, tho- those were experts, but I believe in even you know, what you appeared in this weekend, residents and, you know, can have a view on the traffic they observe themselves, correct me if I'm wrong.
That's, that's correct.
Right. So I think when residents and when neighbors also provide photographs and, you know, spoken and written testimony as to traffic conditions that they observe, that is appropriately to be considered, correct?
That is absolutely something you consider. And I, and I think my point was that there's expert testimony that, that you should consider as well.
Agree. No, I totally agree with you. But I think right, as part of this public record, much has been spoken about by residents and neighbors about traffic conditions and about, right, the exit and the exit ramps on ninety-five, from ninety-five onto the post road and traffic conditions and the left, right exits, you know, like that whole um, situation. So I, I just wanted to clarify that because I know I heard that over the weekend. And I know um, you kind of brought up Mr. Galante and um, your traffic uh, um, expert. And obviously the experts, I, I, you know, should give in deference, right? Because they're experts. But I, I believe I heard this weekend that um, in the, the, you know, training that you were part of, that um, residents and neighbors could also provide testimony on that because they live in the area and they have firsthand experience with traffic.
Yep. And, and that's, that's correct. The, the law allows, you know, and, and goes back to your comment about allowing public comment. I think, you know, the length of this hearing sort of demonstrates the, the extent of the public comment here. And I, I certainly think on, on topics that are relevant to your jurisdiction, the public should absolutely comment and be heard. And it's why, you know, we, we had a whole night of public comment. And, and that is, you know, we've, we've not tried to cut that off. We've not tried to bar that. I think there has been a great deal of testimony that's outside the um, testimony. But certainly, as you said, the issue of, of traffic, that testimony is, is relevant to your consideration. I just think that the, you know, my, my opinion is that you also have expert testimony that um, with, deals with some of the issues that, you know, maybe are more technical than what some of we can observe. And I think those, those are the points that, that the experts, um, you know, really provide benefit.
Totally agree, totally agree. But I wanted to just clarify that when, you know, resident and neighbors and the police commission provide photographs of what they see and, you know, witness in that vicinity on their normal day-to-day, you know, driving around the area, like that, that is properly considered. Whereas some of the other things that you raised today, it's not properly considered, but they have a right to submit it.
Correct.
Right. No, and that's the extent of my comments. Oh, and I guess the only other comment I had was as to the cyclical, and it's just because, right, I missed some meetings and so I listened to them today. So it's sort of fresh in my mind. And um, uh, and so in reading your letter, um, you say in point two on page one, the final floor plan for the building shall be reviewed and approved, which is sort of one of your conditions that, you know, uh, you know, say approval with the conditions that would be, you know, that you would say, you know, that we should consider, right, as part of a final approval. Um, final floor plan for the building shall be reviewed and approved by staff prior to, and I believe in a prior meeting, you spoke about that everything's movable. So I mean, why, why are we really talking about floor plans so much and like where lottery things are and it's all not, it's not final, right?
Right. And, and that was actually, and it may have been in one of the meetings you missed, but the discussion between. Right. And, and, and that's why in, in all the, the flurry of information, I think it was in a discussion between Mr. Ginsburg and Chairman Olfany about, you know, if, if it can all be movable and can be finalized once we know sort of that frankly, if we're approved, then that is something that staff could, with the understanding the commission's concern. And, and frankly, if you wanted to wordsmith the condition, I was trying to get something on here, but that was the.
No, I just wanted to make sure, like, my final floor plan, it's like, yes, it's final, but it's all movable. So like, let's not get caught up in that.
Right. And, and that was why, that was, I think it was actually Mr. Olfany's discussion that, you know, and in consultation with Mr. Ginsburg, just let's, let's let staff confirm that this is what we want.
Okay. And then I guess my final question is sort of about the parking spaces. And I know, like, you don't watch, you're not part of every Darien uh, planning and zoning meeting, but like, we talk about parking a lot. Um, because. Yeah, right. So, um, because parking is an issue, right? Like parking is creates pro- like when there's not sufficient parking, it creates problems. And listen, parking's the thing, whether we want it to be or not, like, how would the three parking spaces adjacent to, like, because I, I like that there's a solution or kind of a, a comic, whatever you want to call it, an adjustment accommodation for parking in your final, in, in this most recent letter. Um, adjacent to the trash and loading area for employee parking, but like, how is that going to be, you know, policed and enforced? Like, I get it because it's employees and they're there first. Manager could be like, dude, move because we need those spots, right? Like, I get it in, um, I just, you know, if it's, um, if it's really crowded, they'd be like, dude, move.
Right. And so I think, and there are two things. One, from, from internal seven eleven perspective, we think there's adequate parking on the site and that's not going to be an issue that, and that there's enough, um, you know, some people might stay longer, some people might just get gas and never use parking space, all that kind of stuff. Um, and again, you know, we've, we've outlined the fact that we have, you know, as a, as a corporate owned store, we have control over certain things. We would know when, when those things are going to happen. So we could make sure that, you know, if, if it's Wednesday and it's trash pickup day, that somebody who's coming in in the morning, you know, parks in that spot to make sure that there isn't somebody there, you know, it's in, in an operational way, we can, we can do that, but we don't, in a, in a true way, we don't think it's going to be an issue because um, we think there's sufficient parking on the site and somebody coming in to pick up trash really isn't going to be there that long, or, you know, we still have enough movement on the site that even if, you know, uh, um, somebody came in to load or deliver, um, you know, a, a, um, you know, a delivery truck could, could, if, if somebody's in that spot could sort of circle the site and then pull in once a car moves out. We do think that there's, you know, from an engineering and operations standpoint, there's sufficient space on the site. Um, I think that came up. Um, it may have been, we're testing my memory, probably either an October, November meeting where we, where we talked about where that, you know, if, if somebody pulled in, a, a delivery driver pulled in, we actually had um, indicated it's sort of the um, top, what I would describe as the top left of the site um, adjacent to the pumps, there's sufficient space for a delivery truck that theoretically needed to wait and not block access to the pumps. So I think operationally, it would work. And if we need, you know, if, that, but those, you know, we could have employees parking there.
Okay. Thank you. That kind of like addresses um, my questions. I won't get into the signage and the location. I won't get into any of the, the ZBA realmy kind of issues because, you know, they're going to be appealed, they're better to address in that, you know, area. Um, but I real, I really do appreciate your thoroughness and um, this is, I mean, hands off to, this has been daunting. And I mean, I can't even imagine, like, you know, you know a lot about gas stations and and the modernization of gas stations now. So um, thank you very much for all of your, you know, thorough attention to detail and um, thorough presentations. Um, it's been very impressive. Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you.
All right. So Steve, I guess that's my turn.
I was just going to say.
I'm talking to myself. Sorry about that. Um, Larry Warble, yes. And then after Larry, I was going to ask Jen if she had any comments or questions or. Go ahead, Larry. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, you know, I really didn't have any questions uh, going into this because we just have so much data already. Um, but I did just, and, 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 and thank you for your summary because it was very strong. I just wanted to make sure I understood. Some of your comments that are jurisdiction and evaluating the use of the property. When you say that, you know, to use to, to examine the property as a gas station, regardless of who the proprietor of the gas station is. But, but don't I need to understand that your experience of seven or applicant's experience of seven eleven and similar facilities with, you know, the with, with a restaurant and with, you know, like that, that's relevant, right? I mean, it's not like, that's someone else is going to have, you know, if it's, you know, if it's Joe's gas station, who may not necessarily have the same, you know, add-ons. Like your experience and your, and your, and your, and the company's experience i- is something I should be considering, correct?
So I, I think there are, there's a maybe nuance to this, which is our proposal, our application, and I refer to it as a gas station because I think it's just, it's easy. But yes, our gas station proposal and the application before you involves what is technically the gas station and under your regulations, a quick service restaurant and commercial sales and service. And so the issue of your jurisdiction is that you are looking at those three uses, the gas station being the primary automotive services under, as, as you define it, um, as your primary use and your, um, you know, the quick service restaurant and the, um, uh, commercial sales as the accessory uses. And, and that's what you're evaluating with respect to the use. And then you also have obviously plans and accompanying materials that support this particular use. So if, for example, you were inclined to approve this application and I don't know, Wawa wanted to come in and have its, you know, make its Fairfield County debut in this location and bought the approval from seven eleven, they are buying what you are approving. If they were going to make modifications to the building or change what the quick service restaurant was going to be with respect to the floor area or um, things like that, that would require a new application, you know, to you to amend this approval. So if they were going to come in and just build and operate this facility in accordance with the approval that you're granting, that's when the, the sort of true user is irrelevant in the sense that, as I said, or, you know, as, as you highlighted, you know, this could be ultimately operated by, you know, Joe's gasoline and builds the same building, builds the same pumps, operates a, you know, what, what's defined as a quick service restaurant, but maybe it's a, a local deli. Or maybe it's a, you know, specialty donut shop or something like that, that meets those, you know, but, but is working within the scope of. but, but is working within the scope of the approval that you've issued, that's where, you know, the user piece, um, is irrelevant. So you're looking at, um, you know, what, what the true zoning considerations are with respect to the use.
All right, thank you for that. Um, yeah, I just, I, I, I just want to say, I, I, I think it's relevant that, you know, your, the, 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 the 7-Elevens' experience, and, and frankly, anyone else's, and has similar experience, you know, I don't want to get into names of other places, um, but that's going to inform us as to, you know, the, the volume of business you're going to do, correct? I mean, that's, that's a reasonable, that's reasonable on my part to say, hey, you know, you've had success in other locations, we should expect you're going to be successful here if you were so good.
That's, that's true. We could also be wrong, or we could be even more successful, which is what the, the competitors think. Um, so I think the fact that we are proceeding with an application, I think inherently reflects the fact that whoever the applicant is thinks that they're going to be successful in this, in this location, and, and as I said during the last meeting, I don't think we're the, we're, we're certainly not the first gas station to, to look at this site, we're just the ones that frankly closed the deal and, and brought it to you.
All right, and then I think the only thing I, I just want to put into the record is, is just, um, since I am in the neighborhood, I just want to let it know that, um, I've actually not had conversations with any of my neighbors regarding this application, with one exception, one of my neighbors, Terry Bach, talked to me about the application. I encouraged Terry to come to the meeting, which he subsequently did, and presented everything that, uh, he had said to me offline outside of the meeting, so there's nothing I've heard from anyone in my neighborhood that isn't part of the record. I just want to let you know that.
Thank you.
It's almost as if I was at a training session last weekend, telling me about things of that nature. Um, so that's it, I don't have any other questions.
Thank you, Larry, that's nice. We call that ex parte training in our, in our class. Um, the one thing I do want to say for the record, if you guys have noticed or have not noticed, Jeremy Ginsburg is not at the meeting today, that's why you don't see him. Um, he's on vacation, so I'm aware he is. Um, that's why Fred's in town hall with me. Um, uh, next up, Jen Leahy. Um, there's Jen. Um, any questions or comments for Amy on the application, or anything I'm going to clarify? You're on mute, Jen.
I, I think I've said everything I wanted to say. I will say, though, because it keeps being brought up as just a gas station, it's the sum of all parts, including 7-Eleven and the name of 7-Eleven, and everything we've heard cumulatively, including your, you know, all the experts that have presented, and then public comment. So, I think I'm, I'm good.
Great, thank you. Um, Jim Rand, uh, where's Jim? There he is. Um, any cluster comments for Amy or the applicant?
I don't know what, at what point the comments I have are appropriate to be raised, but I confess I'm a little bit disturbed and confused as to the, um, as to the combative tone of the hearings. Um, I, I don't mean to say that we're being rude to each other and calling each other other names, um, but it seems to me we're in a, in a, um, we're having difficulty getting answers to our questions, and speaking only for myself, I think that the difficulties that we've had in getting answers to questions, useful answers to questions, um, caused me to ask myself, what the hell's really going on here? I mean, the, the first meeting we had, we discussed, um, traffic, and we discussed the 7-Eleven app, uh, for your iPhone, or whatever it is. Um, uh, and we discovered, uh, we discussed the billboards, and the question was asked, is the 7-Eleven planned to have billboards advertising the new facility in Darian? And the answer was highly unlikely. Now, that's not an answer. Um, that's a, I, I, it's, Ms. Suchin said, it sounds like I'm impeding you, and I don't mean to sound that way, but that's sort of a, of a duck the question. Um, uh, we, we discussed traffic and uh, delivery vehicles and garbage vehicles, um, how often, how, uh, what hours, so on and so forth, and as I recall, uh, one of the operating, one of the operating people from 7-Eleven who attended the second or third meeting said, "Don't worry about it, we know what we're doing." That's not an answer. Um, I mean, I could go on, there's three or four other examples. It, it's, it just, uh, as I say, it, it, it creates some, uh, doubt in my mind that we have the kind of information that, um, uh, we need to make an informed decision and to meet our responsibilities as a commission under, um, our rules. Um, uh, one other, um, one other example, just because it's, I think it's useful, we, we talked about, again, volume, traffic, how many cars a day, how, how many, you know, how many, how many gallons a day or a week, how many trucks, some, to get some metrics, some idea of, in, of how busy the place would be. Um, and, uh, we asked, as I recall, for information regarding, um, 7-Elevens' projections or forecasts for the traffic that they anticipated, and we were told they don't exist. Now, I spent a number of years as chairman of a New York Stock Exchange public company, that answer's bullshit. A company like 7-Eleven does not make the kind of financial commitment this project, um, involves without a budget. Um, now, if, if they're not willing to say what their budget is, that raises a whole bunch of other questions, but again, it's a, it's, it's, at least from my personal individual perspective, um, we're, we're not, we're, we're not being given access to the information that we, that we should have in order to, uh, act in an informed way on this application.
Uh, Mr. Rand, if I can answer a couple of those questions, because I think, you know, this is, this has been a nine-month process, and it was going back through my notes over the last couple of days that I was able to, um, look at some of the issues, but we have, in fact, provided, um, almost all of those answers, and I can have, you know, with respect to your, your comment about, um, the budget, I can have Dorothy Fleischman answer that, because in fact, I don't think we've been asked about a budget, um, to date. Uh, we were asked about, could we, could, did we know how many users of our app we had on a daily basis, and, and that what was not, that's not what was available, but certainly a budget is. Um, the initial discussion, you are correct, that we said it was not likely we would have a billboard on I-95, um, some, subsequent to that, and to the extent it was not clear, we are not, we will not put a billboard on I-95, so we will be 100% clear that there will be none of that. Uh, with respect to loading and deliveries, uh, we had put that, that's in my November 19th, 2020 memo, uh, we have said that we are anticipating 10 to 15 box trucks deliveries, uh, and two trailer-sized deliveries a week for store items, and then we estimate that we would have, um, two to four, um, uh, gas deliveries during the course of the week. Obviously, until we're in operations, uh, we don't know what that exact number is, but, but as, as, as you said, there are projections, and that's our projection, is, is that we will need two to four tractor-trailer deliveries of, of gas, and, and those requisite deliveries for the, um, store and quick-service restaurant. Uh, with respect to, um, the, the details of those, our memo also notes that those deliveries would be made, would be limited to the hours of 5:00 AM to 8:00 PM, unless an emergency situation dictated, and also said that what we, what we generally try to do is, um, make sure that those deliveries occur during the midday hours, which are the, the least peak period times. Um, obviously, if you want to impose a condition of approval, you know, requiring that deliveries be made during that window, uh, that's something that we've represented and, and would agree to. Um, and then with respect to traffic and number of cars, I think that's precisely the issue that we've spent a great deal of time about, um, with respect to, um, Mr. Adams and Mr. Galante, and the number of, uh, you know, vehicle trips that are coming in and out of the site, you know, just, just to be clear, because I think, you know, it was, it was a point of discussion, uh, between them, that, that was put into the record. Um, when you read the traffic report, a trip is an entrance and then an exit, um, so those numbers, you know, the actual number of vehicles, um, is, you know, half of a trip, or, excuse me, half of the total number of trips, because a trip is an entrance, and when that same vehicle exits, that's also a trip. Um, so I think when you look at the, the traffic counts, um, and those details, you have, you know, what, what we expect to be the number of, of vehicles entering and exiting the site, um, you know, on, on any given day. Uh, with that, I will turn it to Dorothy Fleischman, who can talk to you about the, the budget and the projections.
Thank you, Amy. Dorothy Fleischman, 7-Eleven. Um, I think that the question that we were asked a number of times, and as a business person, I'm sure you can understand that we are, I'm sorry?
Can you, you're not, you're off camera.
Oh, sorry. Uh, I'm used to, hang on, I got it. Okay, um, as a business person, I'm sure you can understand that the question that we've been asked about, our sales volume and fuel volume is proprietary information, and we would never answer that question, much as any retailer would never divulge what they were projecting their sales to be.
Well, I made, I just... Can I just follow up on that one question? Sorry? I just wanted to ask this similar question in the same way, and you're allowed to say, um, yes or no, that's what you find by me. So, it, my question is, in terms of budgets, can you tell us what you think the gallonage might be?
No, I cannot.
You can't, okay, that's fine, because it's simple math.
We expect to be in line with, um, the competitors in the market and other gas stations in terms of what they're doing. There was, uh, there were a number of times people referred to this site as a super pumper, and while I'm not sure I really understand what that is, if, if I take it to mean it's going to be the equivalent of a 95 Travel Plaza, I can most definitely assure you that is not the case. It, it's, it's, it's kind of, uh, it, it's a ridiculous analysis, it's, it's nothing like that.
So, sorry.
It's Jim's time, so I don't want to take away from Jen, I'm sorry.
Now, I, let me just, uh, re- respond to, um, to Ms. Fleischman's, to what she just said, I, I, I'm not looking for the profitability of the gas station or anything proprietary, but we're being asked to, uh, approve this, and your decisions about how much tankage and how many, uh, pumps, and so on and so forth, are all based on assumptions. Um, and I think it's difficult for us to make an informed decision without some understanding of what those assumptions are. Now, I'm not insisting, if you don't want to tell us, that's fine, but it makes it harder for us to believe that we've, that whatever decision we reach is, is, uh, informed.
Well, the science behind, um, developing a gas station or any other retail use is, um, traffic volume, quality of traffic, uh, where the traffic's going to, where it's coming from, and the demographics of a market. I mean, those are the things that, that, that drive the decision about where people put retail uses. My retail use happens to be one based on convenience, so I, more than anything, we want a convenient location, a location that's convenient to our customers, that we have lots that are easy to use, that they can access, and the one thing that we don't want to do in my business is overbuild sites, so that we're putting in a $7 million investment when the site doesn't warrant that. This is a perfectly average gas station development, there's nothing super about it, there's nothing freaky about it, 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 they're being built all across the country in all kinds of communities, and it, it's really no more special than any other one. There's nothing special about it.
Just clarify that.
Question.
No one's...
Mr. Ginsburg, can I speak for a moment?
But no one said freaky, or like, like, that never came into the conversation. No one called this like a freaky super development.
Well, I don't think they necessarily had to call it that, but, I mean, I think the indications were that this was something that was out of the ordinary, and it just isn't.
For, for, for our...
I mean, it's, it's, it's a gas station.
No, it's a gas station, 24-hour convenience store with a convenience casual restaurant, correct?
That's, that is the current model for every gas station being built in the country, like, this is just what, what's being done.
So, that's a great, um, Steve, do you mind if I, Jim, do you mind if I jump in, just with a question in the same vein? So, I like data, so we're told, just sounds like you have a lot of data surrounding this, so you don't have to tell us, um, dollar amount how profitable you're going to be, but if you know how much you, uh, how much gas you put in, right, what you guys paid for gas, you know how much came out. So, we're told like two to four trucks a week, but then there was discrepancy on whether that was accurate or not. Can't you back into that number at another very average location and tell us if that is accurate or not? Because that's where it's a little confusing, because we hear one thing, but it's not, and then we're told it, that's what we're guessing it's going to be.
All I can tell you is what we're projecting, and we're projecting two to four. It could, it could be one, it could be, you know, every other three days. Uh, I can only tell you what we think we're going to do, and that's the truth. It may not be what you want to hear, and it may not be satisfactory to you, but that...
Get to the record.
I, I would like to piggyback on those.
Sir, you're not allowed to, sir, sir, it's not public comment. Why, Mr. Turner, it's not public comment.
So I'm not able to ask a question?
No, you're not, sorry. Hold on, hold on, let me just go back to Jen.
Do you buy a public company?
Hold on, Karen, Karen, wait a second, okay, wait a second. Thank you. Um, Jim, I just want to make sure you're, if you're...
I'm done, Dave.
You're done? Okay, fine. Now, hold on, Jen, did you get your questions answered? Because I'm going to go back to that in a minute when I wrap up, um, because it, it's simple math.
But it's literal, and I, and I'm also done, because this is the sum of all parts, that I feel like we have these, we keep having two answers for every question, which basically is no answer at all, so it's a little confusing.
The only reason why this is germane to the argument, and it's, it's part of, it part relates to traffic reports, um, because the traffic reports are based on number of trucks that come in, and just for example, Amy and/or, um, I forget the woman's name from 7-Eleven, um, we look at applications where they do man filling and regrading, and the applicant says, "I'm going to take out, you know, 5,000 cubic yards of stuff," and, and we know that a truck holds 20 cubic yards. If one number divided by the other number, and that's the number of trucks. So, in, in our approvals or in our documentation, we know that... So in in our approvals or in our documentation, we know that, you know, there's gonna be a hundred trucks going back and forth. You know, on this piece of road for the next, you know, during the construction period. That's just something that uh at a habit, that's what we do, and we just like the neighbors to know that. Because certain sensitive areas in Darien, whether they're private roads or public roads or whatever they are, we just want to know. And whether it's school kids walking, and we have to tell the school kids not to walk down Heights Road, or if it's somebody that's on Delafield Island or or Token Eek or whatever, that's what we kind of know, and it all relates back to traffic. That's honestly between me, when I ask you for gallonage, that's kind of what I'm I'm doing. And, you know, I've been in the real estate business for thirty years, and every time I look at a gas station, the number one item that drives everything is gallons, but you don't have to tell us that. There's no law that says you have to. And that's, I'll leave it at that, but.
And I think, Amy, I I think what we've been, you know, repeatedly clear is that, you know, our our estimate and as as Dorothy said, the projections is, you know, we're gonna generate, we're gonna need two to four yeah, you know, two to four tanker deliveries a week. That's that's the production there. As you can, you can do that math. Um the opposition has said that they expect us to do wildly more than that. Um we think they're wrong. They think they're wrong. Um we think they're wrong. They think we are wrong. Um and that's, you know, ultimately the task for you to evaluate. I think, you know, to the extent that there is a discussion about um traffic generated um a- and some kind of tie to the uh to the usage. I think if you think about your own gas fill-up habits, if if I'm running late and I need gas, I might run in and get five dollars of gas to get where I am. There are other times I fill up my tank. Um my mother does exactly the opposite. She refuses to drive on pretty much anything less than a full tank. So I think that there's, you know, certainly um, you know, you can you can figure out how many tankers and how many gallons we expect to to sell. We've given you the traffic uh estimates based on, you know, the the best information we can provide Mr. Adams with input from Mr. Galante. And and those are the traffic numbers. Um and and those take into account the fact that that's not only a gas station and you know, both both Mr. Adams and Mr. Galante noted that the the IT code that is being used to generate the gas station reflects the fact, and and the numbers reflects the fact that this has um not only the gas, but also the quick service restaurant and the retail component. That's all factored into the traffic.
This is a stupid question that I don't know. Because there's not currently a gas station at that location. And that they did traffic studies based on, right, modeling from industry standard, right, right, gold standard, industry, you know, number, I'm guessing database, like when I was a lot, it would have been like books, but like it's not books anymore. It's probably like databases, but like um how do they count for or plug in the inputs for a location like this during right, like, I don't want to talk about COVID, like during this time when it's not currently a gas station nor a gas station with anticipated twenty-four hour convenience, twenty-four hour full, you know, ca- casual restaurant with seating. So like, that is a a an establishment that frankly does not exist here. It just doesn't. It exists only in this area on ninety-five. So what I'm wondering is like, how did they, and like, they're the experts, and we're talking, and like, so I think why you know, Commissioner Olivani and Commissioner Leahy are asking for anticipated and projected um usage, because that's a a gauge also of potential intensity, not traffic, because, right, we know with traffic we're going to focus and rely on the experts, both peer reviewed and the hired expert and the neighbor testimony on what their observations are on traffic. But I think in terms of intensity, that data, especially given you're a corporately owned, as you've put into your presentation a number of times. You're you're a publicly traded company, correct?
Yes.
Right, so that data is available.
No, I'm sorry, we're not publicly traded.
Your your parent company is, correct?
Where I'm I I'm thinking the on the Japanese exchange.
Your parent company is, and there's an A, are it's are you guys traded on the American depositary?
I'm not certain. I don't, I to my knowledge, we're we're not a public company.
All right, well, we can check. Attorney seats, can you check that?
Um, I can try, but but I don't know that I
Reporting requirements, right, of publicly traded companies that have shares that trade on the American exchanges?
I'm I will admit, I'm a land use lawyer. I don't know the SEC requirement.
How you get, we're not, we are not a publicly traded company.
Is your parent?
Why does that matter, um Kara?
Because the data that the information we're asking for is probably publicly available and reported.
That's right. If they don't want to give, they don't want to give it. I mean.
But if it's publicly available and reporting, I'm just I'm just
Right, if I could clarify, what what information, because we started out with a traffic question, and I'm not sure if it morphed into a broader question about what would be available as a publicly traded company. I just want to clarify, because I was gonna have is our
Chairman Olivani and Commissioner Leahy
Yes.
Asked about, and it started with Commissioner Rand bringing up that there have been questions that the information should be easily and readily available. That have not been provided. And that information is relevant as to, like, the commissioner spoke about traffic, but also intensity of use. So it's relevant to the petition, correct?
Right, so I believe I answered all of Mr. Rand's questions, and I was just about to have Mr. Adams speak about
Perfect.
Traffic.
You see the others, and it's fine.
Yes, because he certainly, he's the one that can tell you about how the information is collected and and those you know, how how you take into account, you know, the different types
About how information is collected, just if he's gonna give the information and like give the data that they're asking for.
Right, but I guess what I'm trying to clarify is it started as a traffic question. Is it more than a traffic question at this point?
I think it's traffic and intensity.
Right, so with respect to intensity, I think that goes back to you know, what we were talking about about the the fuel deliveries. We're expecting, you know, a certain number of deliveries, and so you know, depending on how much people feel that that there's some variability in that, just that that we
Like, and that gets back to the public, like, when you're a public company, or things have to be projected with and and those projections, even if they're uncertain, are reported.
Right, but I guess the question would be
Going to answer.
I, you know, I I think you're, are are you asking about site specific or how much?
We're just looking for information, and we're having difficulty getting it.
Right, but I, because I'm not is it a, if it's an intent, if what you're asking for is publicly available information is company wide, that's different. I thought you were asking about site specific questions, which is where we started.
The site doesn't exist, so like, right, that's hard to provide.
Correct?
Okay.
Yes.
So projections
As to a company-wide expectation of how much business or how much gallonage they're going to sell over the course of the entire company?
I mean, that's very specific, but
I I'm I'm truly trying to answer your question, but because what you're asking for is publicly, what you're saying is publicly traded information, I'm trying to understand
Publicly traded information.
What then then I misunderstood your question, because I thought what you were asking was, if we are in fact publicly traded, what is the information that is required as public disclosures with respect to how much either gas we're selling of
Forward-looking projections that need to be reported. If those are reported, there there may be perhaps potentially data that leads into those greater projections. If that data is available and can be provided, I think the commission would appreciate it, if it's relevant to this application.
But I would, I would suggest that it's not, because it's likely available on a company-wide basis, and there wouldn't be a way
It's not available.
If I might, Commissioner Gateley, I think that Jason Adams, our traffic engineer, can help maybe clarify a little bit about the intensity of use question, since that modeling largely comes from traffic analysis.
Can I ask a threshold question first? And and I think I think you might be able to answer. What's, how many gallons does one of your tractor trailers, it brings in two whole?
Um eight thousand.
Okay.
And and we, how many oh, sorry, on a low and a high, can you give me a low and a high for a day?
I'm I'm gonna get to that. I want to get to that in a second. And then, and this is a broad question, and if it's public available, great, and it's not great, it's is, I can look it up when I'm, you know, going to bed. Do you know um on average, across or average or medium across the chain, um what's the gallonage across the chain per unit, first of all?
Across the four thousand store convenience store chain with that, you know, I truly don't know the answer to that. Let me let me answer, let me answer the question this way.
As if
A gas station, a gas, a gas station that's doing between six hundred and nine hundred thousand gallons a week is is a, it's a, it's a pretty low-volume gas station. A gas station doing a year, I'm
Thousand?
It it if, no, I'm sorry, a gas station that's doing between six and nine hundred thousand gallons a year is
It's a year.
It's a year, I'm sorry. I know it's not a week. It's a year. It's it's a really low-volume gas station. A gas station that's doing four and a half to seven million gallons is a super pumper gas station, if I understand what that term means. All the rest of the stations lie in between. The closer you are to nine, the worse it is, the the closer you are. On average, a really good gas station in New England, like a really good gas station, is anything over about, I'm gonna say close to three million gallons. That is, that's a remarkable station. A station like that would not have six pumps.
How many would it have?
It could have eight.
Okay, so it's two more than six, like maybe two more than six?
Twelve. A four, a a two-pump station is a very low-volume station. A s- four to six pump is, you know, your average gas station. Eight, ten, twelve pumps is a much bigger station.
That's fine. Most of the deals that I work on are somewhere between a million and two million gallons. I got it. That's a, we're gonna, we're, I want to use your man.
I think you probably have a pretty good idea.
I do. I understand, and we could always, Bishop, we can always talk about this on deliberation, because it gets sound
But you understand, this is, this is, this is, for me, this is like asking Whole Foods, you know, what 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 are your sales a year? They're not gonna tell you.
I totally agree with it. I don't disagree with you.
Or McDonald's or Chick-fil-A or anyone. They're not gonna tell you.
But I should. Just so we can all, just because, you know, I like to pu- put this on public, so just, let's say we use that type of two million, that's five point two trucks. Just just, I just like to, I just was dividing, wasn't doing anything fancy, so that's five trucks. And and that's an average, right? So we're talking average, maybe it's a little bit more, but I'm still, you know, we had a two to four, so I'm just trying to look at the data and compare it to.
You mean, you need one more variable, Jen, to get to the answer, but um they want Jason Adams to speak?
Okay.
And I'll get to that in a minute.
Uh, good evening, Jason Adams with Big Man Associates, for the record. Ju- just to speak to the the traffic generation and and certainly understanding that this is not an existing gas station, so it's not as though we can represent the number of vehicles already traveling to the site, right? Like, that's the best form of data available. It within our industry, the the next best thing uh is data published by the Institute of Transportation Engineers, so that is data that is collected at existing similar land uses. So i- in the case of this development, we're using data collected from similar developments across the country. Uh some of those may end up being busier than this site, some could be not as busy as the site, some some might perfectly match, but it's an aggregated data. Uh it is what is available to us, accepted by every traffic engineer that you could speak to, by the Connecticut Department of Transportation. Um and it it gives us our best projection at what the site would be expected to generate in terms of the number of vehicles to the site. Um so so that's that's how we're arriving at the data. It is, it is not, it can't be specific to this, and at the end of the day, it is a projection. Um, you know, we we can't guarantee that that is the exact number of vehicles, and frankly, the number of vehicles is gonna vary from a Tuesday to a Wednesday, from April to a July, you know, there there's a lot of variability in in these sites. As has been mentioned, they are also convenience uses, so so there is somewhat of uh a limit to the number of vehicles that a site could generate before it becomes inconvenient. So so that's always an important piece that I think it is overlooked, that a site really can only be so busy. Um and I think that the data shows that, that you end up with a a number of vehicle trips that ends up as a logical number of vehicle trips. Um so so in this case, just to to go over once more, um there is an existing Duchess that does generate vehicle trips today, so what we look at is the increase from the Duchess today to what we would project for the seven eleven in the future. Some of those vehicle trips are, would be new to the area. Some of those vehicle trips would already be traveling past the site uh are considered pass-by trips, so so there's a lot of a lot of factors, but um what our data shows and what has been reviewed and approved by Mr. Galante as part of his peer peer review is that during the weekday morning peak hour, the the project, the seven eleven, would generate an additional eighty-eight entering and eighty-nine exiting vehicle trips over the course of an hour, so just over one vehicle every minute entering and every minute exiting is is what we would project this site to generate compared to the Duchess. The weekday afternoon peak hour, seventy-two additional entering, seventy-seven additional exiting. Again, just over one vehicle every minute entering and one vehicle every minute exiting beyond what is currently at the Duchess. And that that's what our data is based on. Uh it it is considered to be similar to sites like this. Um similar locations, similar end users, and and that is the way that we we project our numbers.
Thank you. Um, can I, can I play, um, Jim, Jim, you're okay. Kara, you're okay. Jen, you're good.
Belabor the point of like considering Duchess the same.
I'm gonna get there. I'm gonna get, I'm gonna get there.
I'm just gonna shut up, because, but like, that's a bad input.
They should, that was the right Okay, so a- and and this is, this is
Steve?
Go ahead, Larry. Go ahead, Larry.
Before you go, I just, I just had one thing I wanted to clarify, just because uh we have the commentary that this is a gas station now again, and I just wanted to ask, I I'm sorry, the 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 business person's turned off the camera, so I don't, I forgot who it was. Is that Patricia Sullivan? I can't remember who, what her name is.
Dorothy Fleishman.
Dorothy, there you are. Hi, Dorothy.
Sorry.
Yeah, no, I um I, no, no, it's very, I just wanted to, because at one point, one of the neighbors had found some information about uh that was publicly available about uh seven eleven's focus on evolution stores. And would you care, how you, can you help me understand? Because it looked like an evolution store was what you have going on here in terms of the different uses.
Yeah, in 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 terms of, you know, what what, how we define an evolution store, this most assuredly is not. Those are, um I think we number right now four in the country, and they are entirely test stores, so they're they're, you know, the marketing name for them is Evolution, but they're nothing more than test stores for us, and they're in densely populated urban markets with uh walk-up traffic. And the idea or notion that we'll be expanding those soon is not on my radar at all. It it's not, I mean, we we are That is not what the, the path that we're going down. They're just purely test stores. There was huge amount of press associated with it. Um, but as a practical matter, it's, it, we're not, we are not developing those on an active basis. There are some in the country that one opened in Dallas recently next to the headquarters, but it was more to test out seating for, um, but you know, they did like a, a gaming thing there. And, um, more of a, the concept that banks are looking at, you know, where they have these cafe areas, but it's all test-based. And not what we're doing.
All right, thank you.
And, and you know, if I, if I may, the reason that we are moving into food service is because, um. The decline in cigarette sales, which is a good thing, on food sales are very much a way that the convenience store industry is offsetting. The loss of those sales. Um, cigarette sales are a very low margin item for us, but they're, they're a high percentage of sales that is declining. So we need a way to offset that. And food is the way that we're doing. Members want this kind of food. It's, you know, it's very successful and popular across the country. New England, it's a new concept for us in New England, you know, it's. Cumberland Farms has been making great inroads into that. So, um, it, it is sort of a new concept. People aren't really accustomed to it. But as we roll, I think you'll see that, um, all of the, all of the stores that I'm going, do have, uh, proprietary food service in them. And, and the reason is to offset.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, thank you very much. Uh, that, that, that's actually really interesting. Um. So then, just to clear, to qu- clarify your answer then, the Evolution Stores, you said they focus on walk-up traffic. Do they sell gas?
No, they don't.
They don't have gas at all?
There may be one that's opened that has gas, but you know, again, I'm not privy to every single thing that become, we're, we're kind of a big company. So I'm not sure of every single thing that's happening, but the Evolution Stores that I do know of are ones in Philadelphia, ones in California, ones in Washington DC. One is in New York, and they're urban environments. That's not to say that they're not testing something somewhere that I'm unaware of. But for the most part, the, the ones that I do am aware of are urban walk-up test locations.
Right, thank you.
Steve. Steve, could I, could I take advantage of Mr. Adams' presence for just a quick one, I think?
Of course you can.
Thank you. As it, as it relates to, uh, traffic volume and intensity of use. Do, does the number of hoses pumping gas make a difference in your calculations? Was that a factor? The fact that there are gonna be, what, twelve in this spot, or is it eight? Twelve, I think, here?
Twelve fueling positions, yep.
Twelve?
Yeah, that, that is the variable used to determine the, uh, projected number of vehicle trips, yes.
Have any idea if it was only eight instead of twelve? What's the difference in your increase of eighty-eight or seventy-two would be?
Yeah, the, the data would, would show, would show lower numbers. Um, it's not exactly linear. Um, in terms of it, it, it's not as though you would re- reduce it by a third. Um, but, you know, it's, it's probably in that, in that ballpark again, like, it, it is the best way to, to estimate the, the number of vehicle trips is. Is the, the fueling positions onsite, because as I said before, it is at, at its core a convenient land use. So if, if there were fewer fueling positions, there would be fewer people that could be served in a convenient manner.
Right, okay. Um, okay, but can't quantify that any more than something like a third if it went from twelve to eight. Is that, yeah, yeah?
Um, yeah, yeah, we could, we could provide that. It's, it is available. I just don't have it immediately in front of me.
Yeah, I don't, nobody wants to keep this open, I'm sure. So, all right, thank you. Thank you. That's good.
How many pumps are currently, because the application has changed so many times, how many pumps are considered, are being sought? Eight or twelve?
Sixty-six pumps, which has two.
Yeah, six. It's never changed.
Dual sided or no?
Yes. Twelve vehicles can fuel at a time.
Six times two, twelve. Hey.
But a super pumper would be twelve, which would be twenty-four. Correct. Yes, thank you. That's a ton for me. Thank you.
Like the one on I ninety-five, the mo- the mobile station, it's got like eighteen pumps. Drive down, there's big numbers, is eighteen, is eighteen?
Eighteen, so that like, it's like thirty-six?
Thirty-six, yes.
Okay, thank you. That is incredibly clarifying.
Okay, Jason. It, it, I'm a numbers guy, I'm a math guy, and, and, um, I'm not a, I'm not a data guy, but I'm a straight math guy. Let's just do a little bit of math and, and I'm gonna give you a math problem or get, tell you a math problem because it relates to traffic. And then we'll see, because what I'm trying to do is, and I'll go back to the beginning. We, relative to traffic, and Amy Sutgens did this in her summation at the beginning, and I'm gonna try not to skip around, but I'm just skipping around a little bit. Is, um, we had two traffic experts on this. Me personally, I don't think they came to the same final conclusions. We can debate that, or we can look at the, at the record later, but I think, um, Alanti said it's significant traffic change. And you said it was not. And it's, you know, I can go back and watch the tape later, look in the minutes, but we'll answer that question another day. This is my, this is my math question, okay? It, it, it's according to the records and my numbers that I usually use is about two million dollars. But for a great gas station, it's about three million gallons. Okay, we're just gonna start with this one assumption, and we can take it down to ninety percent, and I'm gonna try to go really fast, and then you can check run numbers after the traffic. Okay? So if you take, if you take about three million gallons a year for a great gas station, and Darien's a great town, and I want you guys to be a great gas station. You divide that by fifty-two weeks in a year, okay? Your number's about fifty-eight thousand gallons a week. Okay, we know for a fact that underground in this location, we've got three tanks. There's a twenty, twenty thousand gallon tank, there's an eight thousand gallon tank, and there's a twelve thousand gallon tank. Um, gallon tank. That's forty thousand gallons of fuel stored under the ground. Okay, that's a fact. And, and I don't want to get into the, the difference of, you know, would sell more diesel or pre- premium. It, it doesn't really much matter, okay? We also know that your, your tanker trucks hold eight thousand gallons. Okay, so now this is the math. It just bear with me, okay? If you use fifty-eight thousand gallons a week, right, times fifty-two weeks. You get three million sixteen, three million sixteen thousand gallons. Okay, if I take fifty-eight thousand gallons, right? That's how much, how many we're sell per week, and we divide it by forty thousand gallons. That means you gotta fill the tanks up one point four or five times a week. Okay, if I take fifty-eight thousand gallons and divide it by eight thousand gallons in a tanker truck. That's seven point two five trucks a week. Okay, your assumption, and then you can change it, you're allowed to change, you can do whatever you want, just watch my math. If you take fifty-eight thousand gallons a week, and you divide it by eight thousand gallons in a tanker truck, that's seven point two five trucks. At the beginning of this statement, we said you're gonna have two to four tanker trucks a week. Okay, so in the grand scheme of life, if I'm a hundred percent wrong. Okay, and you don't do three million gallons, and you do one and a half million gallons. That gets me to three, you know, half of seven point two five. Okay, you have six pumps, and you got twelve hoses. That's a big station, okay? If I go, if I go, if I take your three million gallons a year, say ninety percent of that. Say you're off by ten percent, you know? So I back it down to seven thousand, uh, I'm sorry, two million seven hundred fourteen thousand gallons. Four thousand four gallons of gallonage for the thing, divided by fifty-two weeks in a year. Is fifty-two thousand two hundred gallons a week. That's three point, one point three times you gotta fill the tanks underground. That's six point five two five trucks a week. Okay, that's the math. You can check the math, you know, and it's fine. And if I'm off by a hundred percent, that's great. I'm off by a hundred percent, and I apologize. But if based upon a great gas station or ninety percent of a great gas station. And that's your fifty-two thousand five hundred gallons a week. And I got six point five trucks, what math did you use to come up with two to four trucks? That's the question. And you can take fifteen minutes. I gotta hold this to question. But that's the general.
Fair, fair question. Um, and, and I, I did follow along with, with your math and, uh, everything, everything looked correct to me. All, all your numbers looked correct to me. Um, I, I, where the, where the two to, two to four trucks a week comes in is, that's the. That's the typical starting projection. So, so based on what seven eleven's experience is. Um, what they know of the site of the, as Dorothy mentioned, the surrounding roadway traffic. Um, their projection is, is two to four trucks a, a week. We, we are, our data doesn't get as fine as for me to tell you that the Institute of Transportation Engineers predicts any number of trucks. It doesn't get that fine. Our, our numbers stay at a higher level and deal with, with total vehicles to a site. But, but not specific to, to the, the tanker fueling themselves. And, and our experience, and I've, I've been part of a, a number of, of permitting projects through the years. Um, you know, our experience is that the end user, in, in this case, seven eleven as part of the application, uh, is, is very in tune with. With what they're gonna expect from the site. So, so could there be weeks that, that do get up to that six? Sure, but, but like, there, that may not be the, the standard, and, and very likely the standard falls into that two to four trucks a week. And then that's how the, the site has been designed. That's how we have reviewed it i- in concert with, uh, the project team. Um, and so that's, that's where I think there can be a disconnect. Should, should this, you know, be that great site? It, it may end up that it has more, more tanker deliveries during the week, or, or maybe even just certain weeks, certain weeks of the year. It may overperform that, um, versus o- over the course of, of the entire year. You're likely to see an average of two to four trucks. And, and Dorothy, I don't know if you wanna to jump in and, and add to that.
Go ahead, Dorothy. I apologize.
I, I, I'm absolutely firm that that's what we're expecting, is two to four trucks a week.
Okay, so let's use three trucks.
Okay. You would non-successful, right? That would be like mediocre, successful, on the low end. If you had four, based on what you're saying, anyway, never mind. I'm okay, I'm.
That's why, I mean, you're right. This is all, we can go over this on deliberation, because at the other day, we have to decide, and we learned this again. In, 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 or, or training classes, we have to decide which expert's right, right? And we're allowed to say that, you know, we're allowed to insert, um, our local experience of, of local traffic. So we have to figure that out, and that's a different conversation. But if we use three trucks a week, right? And the trucks hold eight thousand gallons, that's twenty-four thousand gallons a week, times fifty-two weeks. That's one million two hundred forty-eight thousand gallons a year. Okay? Earlier, what we talked about, and Jen just touched on it a second ago, and I wanna move on, because this is just a point, the commissioners can debate it later. That a, a, an average store does, or a small mom and pop store, I don't, if I'm putting words here about me, I, I really apologize. Does six hundred to nine hundred thousand gallons a year. Right, so now we're ten percent more than nine hundred thousand gallons. But remember, we got six pumps, and we got twelve hoses. You know, and it's Darien, Connecticut, and you're at nine ninety, I ninety-five. So if you're, if you're projections, and I'm not getting into your projections, but I can, I can bet you dolls a donuts when like. Think Shack comes in Darien, they say we're gonna do two million dollars in sales. That's their top line number, because it's, this is what I'm in. And that's what people do, then, then somebody is way undermessed, estimated something. Somebody's way wrong. You know, so that's where I'm trying to figure, and, and, you know, I, Jason, I, I understand your eight, your, you know. Traffic authority, your IT and all those books, I get it a hundred percent. But I've gotta decide, or the commission's gotta decide, is the traffic gonna be two, two to four trucks a week? Or is it gonna be on my numbers? It's gonna be seven point five to six point five trucks a week. Because if it's seven point five trucks a week, that's more than one a day. Oh, oh, I mean, you could, we can come back later, and I wanna go through a bunch of different questions, uh, with, with Amy. Um, but that's where we as a commission have to decide. On how this traffic is, is gonna play out, because there's a vast difference between two to three trucks a week and six point five to seven point five.
We also have the ability to use larger trucks. We have eleven thousand gallon trucks. So, I mean, there's, you know, when I tell you it is two to four trucks a week, that's what, exactly what we are projecting this to be. And I can only tell you with com- complete honesty, that's what we project.
I, I believe you. I believe you a hundred percent. You know, I can change it. That's a simple number. I mean, I don't have an Excel spreadsheet. I got an iPhone calculator and a crayon. And I'm writing down notes, but this is something that, that, that I've thought about, um, day two. You know, because I wanna figure if, what traffic's rate and what the gallonages, because I know in my business, when I work for people. That have mobile gas stations, and they were one of my biggest clients, you know, if they're sorted and do two thousand gallons, two million gallons a year, they sold it. You know, I mean, BP, uh, or Hess sold their entire chain to, to Speedway. You know, they weren't doing good, sold it.
Yes, that's.
It happens. And this could happen too. I mean, the Cumberland Farms, it opened at eight, at nine, it's not a Cumberland Farm anymore. You know, the, the exhibit that, that Amy Sutgens gave us tonight, you know, and they're, they're just, their companies was in Texaco. Now it's a, now it's a, you know, now it's a shell. Across the street, it was a standard, now it's a shell. The other side was a BP, it was a mobile, it switches all the time. I get it, I get it, you know? That's why. It's similar to supermarkets. Supermarkets, it wasn't A and P, it went from Acton, now it's a Stop and Shop. It can be a Hanaford, you can go to Shaw's, you can go to Big One, I get it. You know, I get it. So that's where we have to figure it out, and you can either help me with that. We are gonna close this tonight. You know, all of our questions are gonna end, but you can either help us with that and, and your argument, and I believe you. If your, you know, design team tells you it's two or three trucks a week, that's fine, but then I say, okay, that's one point two four million guns, you know? And gas, you know, a week, you know, that's not that good. And I, I feel bad, because if you're not successful, then it's gonna change its name from seven eleven. You take your brain off it, I mean, it's gonna be a sick though. All right, Amy, I'm up to you. And I wanna try to go through some of my questions. Um, and we're gonna try to do them as, as yes and no's. If there's a yes or a no, that's fine. I just wanna make sure that we're, we're agreeance on the record. And, and we can always go back into the minutes and go back into some of the other stuff and check it, and look at the tapes to make sure you're in the same. So we have the answers from ZBA, you know, you got two denials from ZBA, and you're weighing your options for appeal on those. On those two items. If ZBA's got the gasoline station's not acceptable at the location, and the other one is the signage. Always come back a year from now and say, this is our science package, and we can approve it or deny.
That's correct.
Okay, with regards to ARB, did you ever get a final or positive or any report out of ARB?
Uh, the last, where we left off, that for consultation with the staff, and I think you can go back to the November. I think it was the November public hearing. Um, frankly, uh, like I said, um. The, the me, we had this discussion on the record. We did not get a, uh, we did not go back to ARB a third time. Because the, there was no consensus among the members as to what way we should go with the design. Some of them preferred a more modern design, and after consultation with Jeremy, Fred, and Dave Keating. Um, they thought it best to just bring the issue to you.
Okay, so, so the answer is that we never got a positive report from ARB, and their advisory, anyway, you don't have to get a report from them?
Correct.
All right, and that's a, that's a no, okay? With regards to the, I'm gonna try to describe, with regards to the site plan.
Yes.
The guy from Boller and Jager a couple of times, I asked him to redo the site plan and switch the building around and, and put this over there. And we only have one curb cut, you know, can we switch it to two? You can't go out the back. You know, maybe if you did a deal with Fletcher Brothers, you can go out the back and have an emergency exit. But we never got an alternate site plan, right? Your site plan from the beginning is basically never changed, except for the fact that I think you. except for the fact that I think you moved the propane tanks around the back. Is that right?
Uh, we moved the propane, we removed that um, space at the front, but the general layout of the site has not changed. And I believe the testimony early on was that there is not, i- if you, if you rotate the site to orient the pumps towards the front and the station, the store in the back, there's not enough sufficient um, turning radii for fire or whatever. The, the, the geometry of the site doesn't work. And going out the back, I think puts us not necessarily, there's, I think there's some great issues, and I believe part of the cemetery might be over there too.
That's, it's Fletcher's. Fletcher's got the wall right behind it.
Fletcher, Fletcher first, and then we have an issue. Yeah.
I was saying, but we never did. So we have the, 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 we never got an alternative, a, a significant alternative site plan, other than you lost one parking space, and we basically moved the, the um, the propane tanks from the side, but that's really on the sidewalk anyway. So that's been on the site plan issue.
True, because, and, and that, because the, the configuration doesn't work in an alternate location. In an alternate, alternate configuration.
Right.
So we didn't, we didn't ignore the request. It doesn't.
I mean, not me personally, I think it can work, 'cause when I told my story, I went down with my son in New Jersey, and there was a Wawa, the Wawa Billy was in the middle, they had three pumps on the left side and three pumps on the right side, and Wawa in the middle. And, you know, me personally, I think you can do that, but you didn't. Maybe you didn't test it, we never saw it. I just wanna make sure it's, it's, I'm looking for, kinda sort of, not be mean. I'm looking for yeses and nos that make sure we didn't get it. And I don't think, I don't, we didn't, we never got, we never got a major one. We got the little minor one. Um, earlier, this, the, the, the beginning of your, 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 um, I wanna call it your speech or your summation earlier. Um, you made the reference to, um, you called the, and it might be just a mistake, and I tried catching you, but I didn't wanna interrupt. You called the convenience or principal use? Is that what I heard?
No, and the, the argument that, that was made by Attorney Maslin and Attorney Gleason was that we were proposing multiple principal uses, that, that given the nature of the application, they were all. I am specifically disclaiming that and saying that we will agree that, a- as, as is, as exists in some of the other approvals um, for the gas stations, that the gas station component is principal in, or the, under your definitions, it's the automotive services, that's the principal use. And as in court, and frankly, the proposed amendment also reflects the fact that the commercial sales and service and the quick service restaurant are intended to be accessory uses. So the regulation as proposed does it that way, the application references them that way. And we would agree to a condition of approval that they operate that way.
Okay, so I, it, I, I'm not you, trying to use semantics, and, and I don't have all the regulations memorized myself, but we're kind of saying the same word as principal and primary, that's the same basic word?
Yes. Your regulation uses principle.
Okay, 'cause earlier I think you used the word primary, and then we s- uh, uh, maybe I misheard you if I raised my hand, but I didn't wanna cut you off.
That's.
I think there, I think you said the convenience store was a principal use, but I think you might have meant you, 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 right now, you're confirming that the, the primary or principal use is the gas station. And the accessory, is there two of them, which is the convenience store and the, and the Q S R?
Correct. And that, that is consistent with how we drafted the regulation amendment.
Correct, okay. But, so we have one primary slash principal use um, and two accessory use.
Correct.
Right? And then, and the application that you gave us tonight, which is expected nineteen ninety-seven? Just to make sure we're all on the same page, that convenience store is one thousand one hundred square feet. Right?
That is correct.
Okay, and, and the store we have tonight is four thousand fifty square feet, right?
Correct.
Okay, um, and the, the Texaco gas station has a principal use, or I, I'm sorry, a principal and primary use, which is the gas station, which is the same as you. And there's, and their accessory use is um, the one thousand one hundred square foot convenience store, right?
Correct.
So our convenience store is four times the size of that one, or something like that, three and a half times the size of that one.
The.
We have a second one.
Understand. Right, so the other station is, um, I think it's currently the, um, trying to remember which side, Rowan Avenue, yeah, I think it's the Shell. Um, that's approximately just under three thousand square feet. Um, and that one, you know, I, I believe it's the same. Um, if, if we're taking a break, I'd be happy to go back to and pull up the old um, approvals. I, I think some of them um, had been entered to the record earlier. Um, no, no, no. Yes, not, I, I did, sorry, I didn't mean that one. There were some others that Mr. Ginsburg had put in the record early on, um, and that's where that condition um, is included. I just have to frankly get it out of the file.
It's, it's, you know, we can, we can, we can figure that, 'cause it's in the record, we got it on this. It, it, I don't remember seeing this piece of paper from um, September nineteen ninety-seven before.
Correct. It had not been. And, and I, I put that in to highlight the fact that the um, accessory retail as we're proposing has been frankly, you know, twenty-something years, almost twenty-five years in, incoming.
Good. There, I see your hand up. Let me just keep going, and then if you could just write down your question, um, and then you can answer it later, that'd be great. Um, okay, so I, in, in that gas station, the Texaco, which is now a Shell. Um, the other thing it has on their site is they have a car wash, and they have pumps. So when you say the building, I don't know if you're referring to this one or that, it's three thousand feet. Part of that building also has a car wash where I get my car washed. So it's, it's, that kinda sorta has three too. But the, the, the car wash piece, I think, fits underneath the gas station piece.
Correct.
Okay, all right, so where are my notes? Um, all right, the gallons we just went over. Um, case by case, the chess records. Okay, um, let's go to traffic experts. Um, my recollection from the last report, and I didn't watch the tapes like um, Mrs. Mrs. Gately might have watched um, today. Um, I, I remember a hundred percent Michael Galante saying that it's a significant traffic increase. And Jason Adams saying he disagrees with Michael Galante, and it's not, I, I think, I think the word was significant. So my answer to you is, and I think you said it earlier. I mean, I, I, it's a hundred percent. The, the, the peer reviewer, which is um, Time Bond, is our guy. And, and um, and Boulder Engineering, your guy, those two guys are on the same page. Right? They're fine. You know, so there's no conflict. The other two in my, in my remembrance, um, I think it's pretty good work. Um, Galante and Jason Adams were not in full agreement. Is, is, is that a true statement? Is that a yes or a no?
Uh, I'm gonna be the lawyer and answer neither. I, I believe they are in agreement on uh, the methodology, and I think the dis- the disagreement is what constitutes significant.
Yes, yes, because, 'cause I think I remembered it, and like, I can check the paper, you can check the paper. I said, I think I said to Jason Adams, I said, do you agree with Michael Galante about, and I think the word was significant, and Jason said no. But they didn't, because it's one sentence in his letter that Michael wrote, and Jason goes, you know, I don't agree with him. So we as a commission get to pick, you know, and we learned this, it went over in our, our training class again. It's, it's expert to expert, and we get to pick on who we think is the best. Um, and I don't know, I might think one, the other five commissioners might think somebody else. Um, okay, that, so that was kind of, you, you give me the lawyer answer, which is fine. Um, if fish pole, the fish pole um, design requirement from that guy, what was his name, Tommy?
Yes.
He came in and, and um, and he said, call me Tommy, right? Um, it was Tommy or Bobby. Um, he went into his fishbowl compliance, and, and to me, a fishbowl, you have to have windows on three sides. Um, or at least two sides. Our building only has windows on one side. Is it your opinion that you're in compliance with seven-eleven's own internal guidance that a building's supposed to have a fishbowl effect?
But it's, it's create a fishbowl effect on the pumps, it's not on the, the, the his testimony was not that there needed to be windows on two sides, it needed to be that there was visibility from the um, the, the interior, sort of where the, the employees are at the, the register in that area out to the um, out to the fueling positions. That is accommodated both by the design, which initially complied, and then we enhanced it by adding additional windows along the, the um, additional frontage on that, on that uh, eastern side of the building. Uh, and then enhanced further by the fact that there are security cameras um, that are uh, positioned interior, you know, at, at the employee area out into the, out into the site.
Okay, so, so it's your understanding that, that based upon Tommy's testimony and the piece of paper they gave us, that you're in compliance with seven-eleven's own fishbowl, okay?
One hundred percent. This is, this, this has been vetted by the internal um, you know, team, and it's, it's compliant.
That's cool. I mean, Tommy, when he was there, he goes, hey, I sold the first flat today, you know? That's, you know, seven months ago. Where he's seen it, and it's been vetted a bunch of different times. And I do, I, I understand you moved stuff around, and you added more windows, and something was a black wall, now it's not white wall, and you moved the, um, you moved the uh, the lottery machine that I liked. The tall guy was gonna stand there and block the windows. Um, the reason why, and, and I think uh, Ms. Gately got to it later, is we were talking about the site, the, the internal floor plan, one of my requests was to move the back of the house, which is the bathroom, to the other side of the building, next to the refrigerators. So you could have windows on the front road, on the, on the um, that, that overlooked the post road. That you'd have windows on two sides, but we're not doing that. Um, in, in the stuff that we talked about tonight, if you move the, the lottery stand from the left side to the right side, if you move the, the caters for the front to the back, or you switch the, the aisles this way or angled, that's all the stuff that's, with the stuff that's fixed. The bathrooms that are on the post road side, and the refrigerators that are on the um, loading side, like those two items, which are physical items, are not moved, right?
Correct. Right, it's the, uh, you know, what, you walk down the aisle and get a bag of chips, or, you know, that kind of thing. All the, all of the um, uh, cases in the, what I've described in the middle of the store are what are movable fixtures.
My, my, my guess convenience store, like two, two, two o'clock in the morning, when my wife tells me to get the car before the kids go to school, the aisles used to be square, now they're angled, so people can get it out the front door. Uh, when they switched them, I don't know, but if they're looking at ground, the tiles, you wanna move them, you know, like you said. Um, uh, well, this is one other item, and, and in my, this, we talk about um, perpetuity. Um, and I, I, I don't wanna get into semantics, but um, I'll get into semantics. The billboards not being on I ninety-five, if we put that in the, in the resolution, said the billboards do not be on I ninety-five in perpetuity, is that a fair statement?
That is correct, that addition of approvals, that there's no advertising on ninety-five.
Okay, and that's in perpetuity. So that's another yes. You're, you're.
That's advertising this location.
Yeah, sorry. I go up, I go up I ninety-five, and there's, there's a sign that says.
Folk, whoever just spoke, just so there's a clear record, can they identify themselves and be on camera?
Sure, Dorothy Fishman, seven-eleven. I, I just wanna make sure you're talking, if we have a billboard in Bridgeport that says seven-eleven, and it shows a roost chicken sandwich that you're, that would not be allowed?
No, that's fine. I mean, I, when I was, when I was.
Thirteen. No, no, no. This is, uh, there's a loophole that I, I feel like this is a logic.
No, okay, this, no, we're not, I'm just making sure, I'm just trying to understand. Are we trying to restrict the direction to exit thirteen, Darien, at seven-eleven? That's fine. If you're trying to restrict a generic seven-eleven with a roost chicken and a slurpee picture in, you know, just outside of New York City, maybe in Bridgeport, I'm not, I, we can't agree with that.
Where in Connecticut on ninety-five do you currently have billboards?
Yeah.
I have no idea, none that I know of.
I would like that for the record.
First of all, there's very few billboards, and the ones that are there, they're taken.
I don't even think there's.
And like, raised it into the record and does not wanna waive it, can you please give us the information on currently in the state of Connecticut? On ninety-five, what billboards does seven-eleven currently have? And have immediate plans to place on ninety-five?
I can tell you we have plans, because I'm doing the, the, the restaurants in Connecticut, and there are no plans immediately or as far as I know of, to do any billboards on ninety-five.
Do you have any currently?
I don't believe there are any. I will double check that and make sure that I get.
Or there's none, 'cause you just said you were kind of in charge of it. So like, are there, or are there not?
I told you, I have to get. That there are none.
Ask for that, and like, to say, yeah, we'll get you, we'll get you the information. That's it.
We'll get you the information.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Where else am I? I lost my, I lost my. Um, yes, no, yes, thank you, S R. Um, surveys, um, okay, um, this is other, so there's no alcoholic beverage sales, right, Amy?
Correct.
Got it? Okay, you're not twenty-four hours anymore. You're five AM to twelve PM, or twelve AM?
Correct.
Okay, that's a yes. Okay. Um, this is, this is a, an up, a rational question, I think, for Dorothy. Um, at my gas station, at my commissar I go to, when I get there at two o'clock in the morning, that's when they're filling the fuel tanks. So my question is, can you fill those tanks overnight? You know, can you fill at two o'clock in the morning when the store's closed?
Not if the store is open. No, not if the store is closed. There has to be in person at the store.
Okay, so you can't, so you're still gonna have fuel tank, you're gonna sell these trucks, the trailers, use either eight thousand gallon tanker trucks or eleven thousand gallon tank, that's gonna be between five AM and twelve midnight.
Correct.
Yeah, 'cause the store's, someone's got, the store's gotta be open.
Someone has to be there.
Got it, okay. Um, does the store have to be open for, yeah, it does. Um, fishbowl, we talked about that, thirty days, about that. Um, about that. I, I, I think through, okay, I think, I think I'm square. I, I think I, oh, no, but can I go back to Jason? Is Jason Adams still here?
Yes.
Hey, Jason, did you check my math?
I, I, yes, your, your numbers, your numbers are good, and um, yeah, I, I mean, I, I think that as Dorothy pointed out, the, you know, there is some variability in the size of the, of the trucks, and, and I did some math myself. Um, if, if, if it ended up being four trucks and they were eleven thousand gallon trucks, that puts it up over two point four million gallons. So just as a, as a range. Um, and I think that puts it kind of uh, clearly above that mom and pop successful store range. With, with still just the, the four trucks as is being projected.
Right, then, then I, it's, I'm sorry, but now there's a follow-up question. Um, and when you did your traffic study, and the, the, the movements of the trucks going through the site, sorry, but did you use an eight thousand gallon tanker truck or an eleven thousand gallon tanker truck, and is one bigger than the other? And one would fit, one wouldn't fit? Is that a fair question?
Yeah, fair question. Yeah, the, the site has been, has been designed to, to fit both, both trucks.
Okay, that's, all right, that's right. Um, we just had this, this same question came up with, you know, with regards to fire stations at some other parking lot, and they said, you know, there is big fire truck head fit, but only there is little one that can go there, so the big ones on that side, and the little ones closer to the property, so it'll be, be like, huh? And they redesigned it, so the big truck. But if both trucks fit on site, that's not a question. Um.
Gallonage allowed in Connecticut for a holder to deliver?
I don't know who that was, but he's not on the commission, and he's not the applicant, so. We'll see, did I miss anything?
I cannot think of anything else, Steve.
Okay, um, do we have to open to the general public, the general public again or not?
No, there is no need for the commission, general public again. But intention, I was to allow the.
Did everybody hear Fred, by the way?
Yes.
Okay.
The intention was to allow the applicant to wrap their presentation up tonight. And we expect that they would be able to fully respond to the public comment that was. Records bring hearing.
Oh, and there in the week.
Correct.
Okay.
Um, we should note that we received several additional. Public comment via email and maybe a letter to. Asked, well, between the last public hearing and tonight, all that information has been voted, yeah, and and.
You got, I got one, two, I have like three or four letter emails from Mr. Barthol. Another one that came from Tamara Everhart. But it's signed by Paul Van de Kamp. Then a second one with Mr. Barthol with a picture. Um, and I think the picture says midday, it seems like it's on a Saturday. Um, but that's okay.
Um, just for the record, Steve, you 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 mentioned Tamara Everhart, who is the uh our office administrator, so that 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 letter is not.
Oh, okay. The email, the email that's in the file, um, uh, where is she, Tara? It it came from, it does from Darren P and Z to Tamara Everhart, that's the admin that's in the P and Z office.
Oh, okay.
Says like, it says like, you know, Tamara, please post this to the seven eleven file.
Oh, got it, got it, got it. Can I ask you one more question, I'm sorry. Super painful.
So I asked you to write down notes and hold your question to the end, um, and you did, I appreciate that.
I'm sorry. Attorney Sutcliffe, can I just one more question, I'm sorry, I know I've been painful. Um, your most recent letter, March eleventh. And in it, they, you you know, you refer back to an earlier. Approval of a gas station that had been received, approved with conditions. And in it, you say, um, you know. Several will agree to the same condition of approval that other Darian gas stations that requires. Gas stations, gasoline station used to be primary. And then I, when I look back and I, you know, I wasn't here in nineteen ninety seven, I'm, you can tell by my lovely accent, I'm not from Connecticut. I am from Long Island, um, so I'm not familiar with this. Application, but when I read through it, I see that, you know, first of the. You know, part of the analysis and what the commission's findings were, was that as part of the proposal, the applicant. The applicant proposes a one thousand one hundred square foot retail convenience store, which is significantly smaller, and I don't think you're really agreeing to that condition. In addition, coffee will be brewed and donuts, muffins and or bagels will be brought in from other locations, but not baked on premises. A microwave oven is proposed for reheating food. No other cooking or heating facilities have been proposed by the applicant. Besides a microwave oven, coffee machine and hot dog grill, no indoor or outdoor seating has been proposed, so. Your your application is is significantly different and, you know, distinguishable from this application that was. Approved in nineteen ninety seven, correct?
Correct, and I don't disagree with that, the reason I had included that was was because. Mr. Sherwood's memo that's attached. Is what I was trying to include and that memo doesn't make sense unless you understand that it's part of the resolution and my point being.
From a lawyer who's not a commissioner and and the memo is not incorporated into the regulations, I don't know, how 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 presidential is that?
It's it's my my point was, and it is incorporated into the thing. Is that it's to the issue that accessory retail operations have been happening with gas stations. Since nineteen ninety seven, you know, that that talks about, you know, the Texaco at that point, you know, had more than half of its stores, I believe. Had accessory retail operations and it was really intended to, you know, go to the point that. What we're trying to do is is not something in frankly, modernizing the regulations and and allowing these types of things. Is not really something that's cutting edge, but something that's been developing in the industry over the last two decades. And really goes to why you should be updating your regulations to to reflect what is actually happening in the marketplace. So you are in a better position to be able to regulate those uses as they will, um, you know, likely come to you either now or in the future.
So the Texaco memo that's, the Texaco that's no longer there by a guy, we don't even know who he is. And I'm a white attorney for applicant, again, what's the presidential weight of it?
Is that it was it was referenced in the commission's approval.
Okay, that that was my question, thank you.
Very good, great.
I I understand that, but like.
Right, and and it's in relevance is.
Cooking materials, no seating, no.
Right, right, but but it's to the point that, you know, as you notice, condition three. Whether the convenience store would still be considered accessory to the existing principal use of a gasoline station. A September thirtieth nineteen ninety seven memorandum was submitted to the commission, which addresses the issue and explains that this has become. A customary accessory use to gas stations, that's why I submitted it, the fact that it was submitted. But it's it's to the point that even twenty years ago, this change was starting. And I think it's relevant, as I said, to the regulation amendment and the fact that you don't specifically ask this and.
I think I'm probably dense, I probably just need a little more clarification to understand how it's relevant, but.
And then Amy, just I I apologize, this is just a little foul, but this, are we cooking the chicken on site or is that off site? We just warm it up, you remember?
There is, Dorothy, correct me, but but it's, there's cooking facilities on site.
We're cooking.
Yeah, so we got, we got duck swirks and all that stuff and and. But all like this stuff.
Right, there were specific requirements of the health on that. The fire model, that's that. I would respect any sort of cooking facilities.
And the venting and all that stuff, okay, that's fine. Um, so that's the little bit of a difference, this one's one thousand one hundred square feet. With no cooking, ours is four thousand fifty square feet with cooking, but I get your point, the reason why you put it in the file and I and I respect this. I think we're done, now Amy, you you get the last word, um, as always, the only question. You have nothing left?
I have no words left, I think we've used them all nine months.
I I hear you. It it, we have the same page that we we always said from the beginning, there's gonna be no public comment at at this meeting because we already exhausted it all.
Correct, that this was intended to be our wrap up and any any remaining. Questions from the from the commission because quite frankly, we don't have any, neither we nor you have. Time left to continue the hearing.
Okay, so you're done.
We are done.
Thank you, so the the applicant rests, um, with that said, I would entertain a motion to close this hearing. Commissioner? Someone's gonna make the motion, George Riley, make the motion. Uh, Jen, you got the second?
Hey.
All right, thank you, everybody, this hearing is not closed. Um, what's our timeline is, we have to make a decision in sixty five days, what's the number?
The the statutory limit is sixty five days from the closing of the hearing, uh, we would anticipate that. Mission would deliberate on this application, potentially at your next meeting, March twenty third. Um, if not March twenty third, likely April sixth. Meeting following your next meeting. Unclear at this point whether we'll conclude deliberation within. One meeting or if that's gonna take two or more meetings.
At least, it's at least two or three, because when we get a draft for a solution, we're gonna go over that, so.
Right, exactly, so staff is gonna have to take some time to to draft a resolution, uh, the ultimate. Decision and then. Mission will, of course, consider that resolution. Make a decision on.
You know what the last meeting is after April sixth?
Uh, the next meeting following that is April twentieth and.
So there's no thirteenth?
No meeting currently scheduled for the thirteenth.
Okay.
Thirteenth, that would be April twentieth and then April twenty seven.
Okay.
So, you know, if you. At the very earliest, end of April, or likely sometime in the day.
Okay, so maybe we're on the same page, I think, right, I mean, the hearing's closed, we have sixty five days. There's four meetings before during that sixty five day period, so you might be in the audience on. March twenty third or March or April sixth, um, but the deliberations will be on the agenda, if it's on the agenda.
Yes, correct.
Okay, great, all right, that's just for your interview, if it's on the agenda, you'll see it. Uh, but thank you, everybody, for this application, Dorothy, I think tonight's nice to meet you. Um, and you'll be here. You're welcome, thank you, all right, that's that application, thank you, everybody. Now we're gonna move on to the general meeting. Um, we've got four items of the general meeting agenda, um, and a couple of other things, if anybody needs to take a break, yeah? All right, yeah, can I go run a drink of water, too?
No, see.
Thanks. Three minute recess to fill up my my.
We're done in ten minutes, though, right?
Yeah, no, actually, I had, I had no render with Fred, it was ten o'clock and. All right, I'm sorry, we'll go fast.
Oh, you're good.
It'll be three minute recess.
Uh, you shouldn't be, okay.
Great, I'm back, um, we have a quorum, everybody back?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, we never shut, never stopped recording, dude.
We did not stop recording.
Okay, um, the next one, Jeremy, amendment to coastal site plan review number three fifteen C is in Charlie, flood step prevention application. Number three sixty one C is entirely fifty three Contemn Island LLC, fifty three Contemn Island. Uh, placement of sculpture within the rear yard of the property. Uh, we have a letter in the file that we got from Leeson Associates dated March eleventh with some attachments. Um, Fred, what do we got?
Yes, Steve, uh, so the applicant proposes an amendment to their existing postal site plan and flood damage prevention application to. Place a six, approximately six foot high sculpture within the north center rear yard. The tanker point two property or two land has been designed by. An engineer and certified by race engineering that it is or will. Extend flooding forces, uh, it is located within VE elevation thirteen flood zone. Uh, the elevation of. Elevation seven, so the commission received a letter dated March eleventh as. When Albany noted describing. Sculpture depicting the rotation and.
That's a building department question, anyway, okay, anybody see this from the the water or the road or the highway, is anybody else gonna see this thing?
It is my understanding from speaking with Attorney Gleason earlier today that. It will not be visible from the water. Gleason can expand on that if you wish, is the commission has no questions. And but is my understanding, it will not.
Okay, or the street. Okay, um, it looks kind of three foot me whether, but it's your application or your general meeting item, is there anything you need to add?
Red said it all.
Thank you.
Forward, uh, we meet setbacks, it's located behind a storage shed that they're going to be erecting, it's in the process. And there's a berm that uh is between the beach and the water that has vegetation on it that is likely to screen it. From water views, um, and uh. It's not visible, great.
Why are we, why are we seeing this application, they put statues at churches all the time?
I I I could not, I think the staff were reluctant to sign off on it without you guys blessing it.
They're smart people.
Yeah, we we wanted the commission to take a very quick look at this, especially from the perspective of of the flooding perspective and just making sure that. Everything lies to.
Anybody have any questions on this one, George, your microphone's up. I'd like to move approval. Nice. I'm here second.
Do it, second.
Any discussion?
Guess not.
Take out all those in favor. All right, great.
Thank you all, have a good night.
Next item on the agenda, Jeremy and I spoke about this, I don't know, a month ago. The the, there's a bunch of restaurants or. Five, six, seven restaurants that had outdoor seating during the last year for COVID. Um, some of these guys loved it so much, they want to have again in twenty twenty one, the summer, basically from April first to November. Um, we already saw one application from ten twenty that's kind of probably a permanent, we're probably gonna see other applications from. Uh, Bodega and and what's next? Those applications, this came up a while ago between me and and staff and Jeremy, those are on municipal properties, we're not gonna see that now, so. Tonight, um, the the question at hand is, um. We're looking for, you know, give these guys the green light to to do everything that they ever do, if they ever did last year. And the only new one is Tanga, they want to put something in a parking lot, so Fred, do you have anything to add to this?
I think you pretty much covered it, this is really just an extension to allow. Uh, these restaurants to to continue their outdoor dining activities and in the case of our method. Uh, to continue other outdoor classes, I would respect that process through the end of this calendar year, the end of twenty.
And with this, that said, they're still technically temporary, um, because it's not permanent. And and again, they need sign up from the building department when they put their tents back up and the health department and also probably the um, the liquor authority.
Yes.
That was the same thing we did last year.
Depending on the particular circumstance, um, uh. Or authority we commented as I, by case.
Any questions, comments, concerns relative to this? Go ahead, Kara.
Um, just a couple things, A, I really, I, I thoroughly. Was impressed and appreciated all of the applicants present, you know, submissions and, right, that I, I was actually, what I particularly noted. Was all of their, like, attention to crash prevention and, you know. Citing specifically how they would address that, which I personally think is very important. Um, I guess I would just like clarification and and Fred, if you're not the right guy, then I I can look it up myself, but I just off the top of my head, I can't recall. The governor's, I mean, and and there's so many executive orders, so like, you know. But I remember they, his initial order spoke specifically, and there may have been follow ons or amendments, right? So like, I could bite off here, spoke to. Restaurants and retail, right? So like, you could sell stuff if you had a store outside. Or if you were a restaurant, you could serve food, and like, they didn't want bars, just having bars outside, whatever, you had food or whatever. But like, the exercise thing, and I'm not opposed to it, I just want clarification about whether the executive order permits us. Cause our regs, I'm not sure do, to allow. Exercise, which is not retail or food and, you know, restaurant outside. And like I said, I'm not opposed to it on a personal level, I'm actually pro it, I like it, I just want to make sure that. If it's not covered by one of the governor's executive orders or our regulations, that we, um, address it in a separate way. If anyone.
Fed into that one.
I can look up myself.
So there, there's, there's been a number of, of businesses that, that we've permitted to to operate their, their classes outdoors, including. One of the.
Boy Ride, yeah, yeah.
Joy, Joy Ride, uh, by.
I know we permitted it, but I wanna.
Body under Palmer's supermarket.
More seeking clarification on whether the governor's orders allowed it.
We did.
I know.
I'm not certain, uh, I'm not certain that the governor's au- uh, orders specifically called out. Exercise facilities, we, we need to look. Into more, or the, of course, any executive orders that, that have come out surrounding, uh, these types of uses.
Okay.
Restaurants and and outdoor sales and service.
And but I guess then Steve's point, right? Executive order permitted it and took away approval times, right? So if you didn't approve it, it automatically was approved unless denied. So I guess to Steve's point, regardless perhaps of if the governor's executive orders permitted it. We can override our regulations given. Okay, thank you.
Yeah. The commission have the authority to, especially under these circumstances, to.
Okay.
Override the regulation and make the decision that, given the circumstances with the pandemic, with COVID nineteen. Difficulty that businesses have been experiencing throughout this time, that it makes sense to extend this, uh.
Yes.
Allow them to continue to operate during, during these times.
And that makes a lot of sense, and then especially given these particular circumstances, and then actually reading the, at, one of the, the exercise applicants. Um, petition that some of their clientele. Given the nature of this situation are not yet comfortable exercising, given, you know. Rest, respiratory droughts and whatnot, um, exercising inside, that I think, yes. It 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 seems entirely appropriate, I just want a clarification on that, so I appreciate you guys indulging me, thank you.
Hey, Stephen from Papa Joe's, Stephen from Papa Joe's, George, I'm sorry.
Just, just real quickly, a, a quick, uh, uh, Google search shows the executive order of seven M M. Relates to restaurants and other small businesses having the ability to use open space that, uh, encroaches on state right of way. So the executive orders may not even be implicated by using the, uh, side yard, it, it's more a question probably. Of taking out parking that we require, and we, we, we're happy not to require at this point.
Yeah, we're good, I'm sure we're good to go.
Thank you, George.
With regards to Pure Bara, which one is there? And with regards to, um, Papa Joe's, Mr. Papa Joe's, oh, you're, you're smiling at me, do you, you like this idea?
Hey, it works, we're just trying to make everyone happy and make everyone feel safe.
Oh, man. All right, I think we're gonna look for a motion to approve this unless anybody has any questions. I got a motion from Jennifer and George, all's in favor, and Larry? Best rock guys and Pure Bara, you got your restaurants back for the next year, good luck.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Free ice water for everybody. All right. We just blew through a whole section, I just want five applications, that's one way to the end. All right, next, um, deliberation possible decision on the following. Coastal site head review number seventy three B is a boy, flood damage prevention application, application number sixty one B is a boy. Land filling and reguarding application number four ninety three, Sam Fuller, forty Contemptment Island Road. This is Mr. Fuller's, um, new house, he's gonna knock down and rebuild and change his grade. And Fred gave us a, um, draft resolution in our packets. Um, to go around the horn, any questions, comments, typos, agendas, um, Fred did a good job, I didn't really see anything that jumped off the page of me, it's pretty straightforward, but the green and a lot of dirt. Um, George Riley, your microphone is on, you wanna go first?
Yeah, I, I will confess to being surprised and very late at, in the game. But that this is reported to be on the north side of Contemptment Island Road. I would have sworn this was on the west side of Contemptment Island Road. It indicated south of Shenamere, but I'm sure we all know where it is, I'll let staff deal with that however they want to deal with it. The only other thing, paragraph five. On page two. Paragraph five, uh. To conclude the penultimate sentence, I would add that the applicant agreed, and the applicant agreed, there was a condition requiring the removal of this tree. And the applicant agreed.
What do you want to put that in? Who started it?
And ending the, uh, second to last sentence. It includes a condition requiring the removal of this tree, and applicant agreed.
Got it, sounds good to me.
And the only other thing, a bit of a, but just knowing of view easement issues a- as to page six, item E. Um, uh, same, referring to the same twelve inch juniper tree. I don't think we need the last portion of that provision, which says so as to. Ensure that views are maintained to Scots Cove from neighboring properties. I don't think we want to suggest that we're making some kind of permanent or longstanding determination, so I would just strike that from so as to.
That's a good idea, because that goes to the perpetuity thing, if anyone wants to come in and put in a row of hedges. Right, you know? I got you, I would, I would agree with that, any, anyone not agree with that edit? Uh, I like your tonsils, Jen.
Sorry.
All right, that's great, um, Jennifer, you didn't enjoy this?
George.
Mary, questions, comments, Mary, good? Jim was good, Jen's good, any questions, Jen? Mary's good, Kara, best for last? Any questions coming?
It was the best presentation I've ever seen.
Guys are real estate, dude. Looking for a merchant.
But like, and the coolest house I've ever seen, like, that's all I'm gonna say. And I like George Riley, that it's, that's it, like, and I love the neighbors, so.
Um, motion to approve, looking for a motion to approve the resolution as amended, which is moved by Kara, seconded by Larry, all's in favor? All right, six, nothing. Sam Fuller, you got your new house. Okay, next item up for bid, uh, landfilling and re- reguarding application number four ninety six, Kenneth and Cara Cole. Two, two eighty one Hollow Tree Ridge Road. This is a new single family house on a now vacant lot that's gonna sort pools and terraces, and somebody's building a house. Quick clarity was the applicant, um, and this resolution's even shorter. Let's go with Jennifer this time, ready? Start out with Jennifer, any questions? She's saying no. Uh, Larry, Kara saying no, Jim Rand's okay, George Riley's microphone's on?
I wouldn't dare. I'm done.
I'm looking for Larry's eyes to give me a smile. You good? It's if, if Larry, we hang another two hours, we're gonna be St. Patrick's Day.
When, when, when did we review this was, was, I just don't remember, this wasn't at the meeting I was in at, was it?
It was still.
It may have been Larry.
February twenty third.
No, I, I missed the March second meeting. So I was here.
Looking to motion approved as submitted. Somebody can look at the minutes later.
Yeah.
All right, well, you were there, you got, you, you're at the February twenty third meeting.
Yeah, I was at the February twenty third.
Yeah, looking for a motion to submit it. George Riley moved it, can I get a second? Kara Gately second, all's in favor? Fantastic, thanks, next. Uh, well, um, also site plan review number three fifty four flood damage prevention application number four oh four. Land filling or getting application number four ninety five, Michael and Justine Mullin at eight Nickerson Lane. Um, this was the people with the pool house in the back. And we found this pipe, and the pipe got rerouted, and we made sure the guy next door was happy.
Correct.
And there's all kinds of stuff in this, in this, going on there, they're gonna build this cultex and the separators before they build the, uh, the foundation.
Brained and trined, who's, uh, they proposed on the property, uh, after a neighbor pressed some concerns regarding. A drainage pipe, uh, from some pump in the basement of the house. We did a condition in the resolution to require that. Applicant. Outlet that, that drainage pipe into filtration property prior to.
Questions, comments, typos, scribblers, errors.
Real, real, good.
Go ahead, George.
Yeah, George.
All right, real quick, but since we did spend a fair amount of time on that pipe, I love the, uh, the, uh, the pipe alleged to traverse the property, I like that. Uh, but I would say, uh, after the word property, just add if found. Cause I'm sure it's remains an allegation, and we don't know if it has been found, so I would.
What number's that? What number of letters is that? I'm sorry.
So. Uh, so it is the final sentence of that, uh, number four on page two. Uh, uh, which required the diversion of the drainage pipe alleged to traverse the property, if found. In the direction of fourteen Nickerson Lane. And just to top it off, pressing my luck, page four H. Uh, the second sentence begins, a drainage pipe, I would say, any drainage pipe, discharging water from the basement sump, in case there isn't one.
That drain, so any drainage, instead of where the, changing that to any.
Right.
Got it, okay, Kara, anything else, Kara?
No, my comments were similar, the pipe is, does the pipe? It's still baffling to me. Um. Yeah, so I think George comments, actually. I am more a narrator, and he is more a succinct lawyer, and so I'm gonna just shut my mouth, and cause everything George said, essentially, as it's covered my issues.
You're a narrator? Come on, you kidding me, really?
Okay, some lawyers scribblers, some lawyers weave stories.
All right, uh, anything else? Any vote for a motion to approve as amended? That's Jennifer, seconded by Kara Gately, all's in favor? Okay, Larry, you in or out?
I'm gonna abstain, cause I missed the pipe discussion.
There you go.
I mean, the pipe. Larry. Actually, kind of fascinating.
It was, I thought it was.
All right, everybody, it, it, all right, that was a motion that everyone approved, so we have, what, five, two, one obsession?
Right.
Got it, all right, thank you.
That's a.
Mr. Mullins got his new pool house.
So sorry.
Okay, um, I would like to punt the, um, the, met, the, um, minutes to next week.
Sure.
We punt the minutes to next week, so I want to give you five, five minute, and all of the cameras report, if you guys don't mind.
Okay.
All right, good, thank you, I appreciate the, Aaron's report, I wrote down some notes, I just want to get this stuff into the record. Um, it's been a busy week for me and us and everybody else. The thing that's important, I think, are, um, the first piece of the Corbin District, David Genevieve's project on East Avenue with twelve assisted unit dwelling units, is, um. Under full construction, I think they're topping off the buildings, there's gonna be a topping off ceremony, um, next Friday, March twenty sixth, that, um, that I was invited to. So I think we get to congratulate, um, Mr. Genevieve, and the picture was in the paper that that project's moving forward. Um, the next item on this is Oxford School is full bore under construction, those guys are moving, they got piled, stuff all over there. Um, and I think they're doing great progress, um, I don't know their timeline, but I'm told that their timeline is on time, and they're under budget. Kara, no laughing, I'm not gonna let you talk, because you might have a different view.
Traffic is bad.
Yeah, we're, we're moving on. Um, Walgreens, Walgreens is, is from the outside, the new facade is on, the parking on the roof is on, the, um. The little hut that takes you downstairs to the store, that thing's done. The new mansard roof screening the parking that faces, um, Nurt Heights Road is, is basically completed. Um, I don't know when that tour's supposed to open, but I'm, I'm told it's supposed to open, I think, in the begin, end of the summer, beginning of the fall. So I think that is looking good, it is, so it's, it's, um, it's a little taller than I thought it might have been. But we approved it, and it is what it is, um, I think it's gonna look good. Um, so that's all good news. The other item that's on, uh, my list here is, uh, for the record, I want everyone in the general public to know that, um. Our commission, as a commission, took a real estate, um, I'm gonna call it continuing education class, um, on March, um, sixth. Um, I think every single one of our commissions went in there, it was a seven hour. Core, core course. Um, we were on from nine thirty in the morning till four thirty in the afternoon. Um, I did take a break, I, I learned a lot from that, um, I knew a lot from it. It, the only thing I would say is, um, it, it's good, it was, it was very good training, but, um, area, it's suit a whole lot. Now, so a lot of it was lawsuits and practices and and how to not get sued, and, you know, guys that did get sued, and. Because it's lawyers, they're saying, you know, I got sued in this case, and I won that case, and da, 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 so it kind of teaches you how not to get sued. But I, I do think a lot of the guys. Made, um, some good comments, and I think we actually used that, um, tonight, so I, I, I kind of sort of did like that.
Can I just say, as a new commissioner, and who's a lawyer, I loved, I mean, obviously, I loved it, cause it was like really lawyerly, and I had my AirPods on and drive the boys around. But there was a Yukon learning thing that was done, not by lawyers. But by, I feel like land use, like, maybe engineers, or like, like, land use professionals.
I've taken that one twice.
And, and so, before I was even like, on the commission, um, John Seedy. Was like, go attend this, and I did, I have to say, that was. A thousand times, like, I loved the one over the weekend, cause I like, I just loved it, like, I drank it all up, cause it's like in my wheelhouse. But the other one at Yukon was like, at a level of like, information that I had no idea about. And was really informative on the technical side. and was really informative on the technical side and on like wastewater, um, stormwater management. Call, I didn't know, I didn't even know that a call text was a word, like call tech systems and it, it really, um, had me appreciate the importance of water table and, you know, why rooftop gardens are important. That's just trendy. It actually like, is it important? Like, it was like an education I didn't even know I knew, didn't even realize I needed, if that makes sense. But so I think the Yukon one was really at a level of like in, of learning that was different.
These are good. I've, I've been to him a couple of times and at one time in the commission, he brought in, he brought in a guy.
I got daily credit, but like I'm saying the Yukon one was like at a different level.
Yeah, no, we, at one time we brought in a guy to talk about, um, rain gardens. It was another fancy word for rain gardens. Some of the fancy words for rain.
Detention basins.
That was the Yukon guy.
Right. Yeah, but my, my point of bringing that up is, is our commission, um, is way ahead of the curve. I, as, as a commissioner and ten Darian and, and, you know, I wanna get to this in, in two seconds. There's a hundred sixty-nine towns in the state of Connecticut. Some of the commissioners in other towns have zero training. As part of this, um, Senate Bill number, uh, ten twenty-four, they wanna have us, they wanna have all commissioners have six hours of training every year. We had seven hours of training this weekend. Um, you know, so again, once again, we're ahead of the curve. I just want the general public to know that their planning zoning commission takes this stuff seriously and that we do true training and we loved it. And I think some of it was useful tonight and some of our stuff will be useful tomorrow. Um, okay, next. Um, the only other or last item and then you guys always can ask me any question whenever you want to, is, um, in our last meeting, we quote unquote approved, um, the letter that was sent to, um, it was, I call it the March, the March second letter that was sent to, um, as in testimony for Senate Bills. Uh, I mean. The bills, um, eight oh four, sixty-four thirty and sixty-five twenty-one. Um, that was sent on March second, on Friday, um.
I would just note that that, that was sent to the joint housing committee. Uh, General Assembly Committee that, that those particular bills were introduced.
Okay, so we sent it to that testimony for those different bills and that was for the joint housing committee. Okay, um, on Friday, we sent that three page letter, I think. Yeah, we sent, no, that one, that one said March on Thursday, three pages, March, I think it's three pages, March second. On Friday, we sent that three page letter to our, um, local, we call it delegation. Darians represented by, I think, two senators and two state reps.
Yes.
So, um, that, that letter with a cover letter on top of it on, on, um, on March second was sent by email to the, all four, sent all four reps. And then did we send it by snail mail to their Hartford office and their local office here?
It has not been sent.
Okay.
And do that if you will.
Yeah, if you send a snail mail, it'll be great.
Uh.
As at, at the bottom, the way I close these letters is, I mean, I personally, you know, I've never, I've never met any of these guys. You know, and they represent us and they're making decisions for us. At the bottom, I said, you know, please contact me or the planning zone of office. If you'd like to meet or discuss our, our submitted testimony with the commission. What I'm kinda really doing is, is sending an olive branch out to these guys and say, hey, do you wanna come talk to us and tell us how you're gonna vote or you want our input? You know, come on in. Where, you know, I, I've never met these guys. You know, I've been on the cushions for nine years or eight years, whatever the heck it is. No one's ever come to, I, we're standing next to me, I would, I'm never sharing your guys' hand. If Kobe, you don't shake your guys' hand. But I would love to meet them because they're acting on behalf and they're our representatives.
Senator Duff.
They're representatives.
I would note that Senator Duff and Representative, uh, Matt Blumenthal, um, did acknowledge receipt of.
Oh, they did?
Of that letter and, um.
By email?
By email and indicated that, yeah, they closed.
Awesome. Did we get it to our, our new representative though?
Yep.
Yes.
Billy Miller, Billy Miller, yeah. If you can phone that email to the rest of the commission. Yeah, I went to the, there were two reps, which is Terry and Blumenthal and then two senators, which is, uh, Patricia Burley Miller, Neil. Next item, um, I didn't notice.
I watched the hearing. I watched the testimony.
Let me get into that. Let me get to that next, Kara. Um, then on, on Thursday, I think it was Thursday, which is, is, um, yeah, it was a couple of emails went around, I think, on Thursday, which is the eleventh. I found out that the testimony were for ten appeal, ten twenty-four was gonna be on Monday morning at eight o'clock. Um, you know, and, and you had to submit your name to be able to testify and you had to submit your documentation by three o'clock on, on, um, on, uh, Sunday, Sunday, right? So I said, and when email came out, I said, maybe we'll submit testimony and Kara, I give credit to you. You said you can submit testimony after the fact that it's like it's in there and, and that's what we did for the first letter. But we made an executive decision to get testimony in by the, um, by the deadline, which was three o'clock on Sunday. You gotta remember, town halls close Friday. Town halls close Friday. You know, these, these guys work four, four days a week, ten hours a day.
I wasn't saying.
That's their forty hours. So it's close Friday.
By the way, the letter was great.
Close Saturday and Sunday. So when something pops up at, at three o'clock on a Thursday, you know, if staff's gonna do something that helps me, you, anybody, you know, they don't work on Fridays. They don't get paid.
I'm not.
I, yeah. So I asked, and Jeremy went on vacation as of Thursday, right? He wasn't coming in Friday. Jeremy's, I don't know where he is, but he's so, um, so to, to really, really appreciate Fred, who's sitting right next to me. I asked him if he could, on his day off, recraft the letter, which is the, the March second letter, to switch it around to make it for, um, Senate Bill twenty-four. I did it, you know, in twenty-four hours. Or, and he did, it's, you know, he and I talked, I think we talked Sunday morning at nine o'clock in the morning.
Yeah, you, you know, they're, they're, they're important issue and, you know. We all agreed that it makes sense. Put the opinion out there, get the testimony submitted.
Oh, total.
About representative. Respect to, uh, ten twenty-four invitation. But as you all know, is, is the goal that. Of each of the, uh, you said we do Connecticut initiatives that we've been talking about. It did, Billy only made sense.
Right, you're actually on you, kinda hearing you on Steve's.
Yeah.
Yeah, talk up a little bit.
Yeah.
I mean.
Uh, it's, you can, good, good.
Yeah, uh, you know, it, it, it really only made sense to make sure that, that we got something submitted by the dead on this for consideration of our representative, given the importance of, of, of so many of these issues. Policies have been raised by desegregating ticket. Um, you know, we had to do it. And, um, you know, I think that was the worst step to take.
And, and what I, I wanted to say is that, that, that it was an executive decision by me to do it. Um, and a recrafting of the letter. Um, you guys didn't see the letter until it went out. It's under my signature, but anyone has any questions about the letter, I personally, I think, sent it to everybody. Um, and, and, you know, it's representative, it really is an offshoot of what the subcommittee's hard work was when the subcommittee was constituted, I think, in, it was, it was constituted somewhere around September. Now, so we were looking at this stuff since September, October, November, December, January, very much. Um, yeah.
I just say, you guys did a great job, as did the subcommittee. And if there's any feeling of defensiveness, I wanna just throw out there that if I gave anyone a feeling to be, to be defensive, I think you guys did a great job. I think both the subcommittee, Chairman Alvani, Jeremy and Fred did a gr- I mean, that was not an easy letter to write, given the changing, you know, the number of bills being thrown out there. The, we all knew what the ultimate bill was going to be and the breakdown and skeleton bill, right, right? Like, it's like politics one oh one. And so you're, you're writing a response to a moving target where you know you're gonna get literally twenty-four, forty-eight hours where they're gonna slam the ultimate product on you. So regardless of party, like, I'm not dismashing, like, that's how politics works. And I think the letter was substantive, the tone was right, it was factual, it had data in it. And it was a really great team job, both by the subcommittee. And then when like bills change in the last minute, like right on the week, like I didn't realize Fred, it was you, but like, it was a great letter. And for, like, I was proud of it and, you know, I did not, I was asked to, you know, consider submitting personal testimony about it, but I felt like it was covered and I didn't want to under, I didn't wanna undervalue or compete with the commission's letter because I felt it was so strong. So, um, I was really proud of it, even though I didn't have a single, I was proud of it.
It really was, it really was a collaborative effort amongst all of us. Um, that, we took the language from, from what was developed by the subcommittee, um, you know, we, you know, circulated it amongst ourselves. Jeremy, Eve, um, Jennifer, Larry, all of you really, um, were, were instrumental in, in creating the letter.
Yep, but, but kudos, Brad. Kudos for, for stepping up on a weekend that, that's, you, you don't see that all the time in town employees, the, um, so that was well done. Everybody.
Happy to do it. Happy to do it.
Thank you. Um, then as an offshoot, the, the letter from, um, March second was also, um, submitted to the Darian Times. And if, if you guys read the Darian Times and some people do, some people don't, um, it was a front page article. Um, it wasn't the headline, it was off the side. Um, but it was a front page article and my wife, I can tell you, she did not read it. What the hell is your name?
I really do. I hope people read it.
It's, yeah, I, I have found out that a lot of people do read Darian Times online and I think it came out on Wednesday online. Or I think it came out Wednesday online and then it hits a front page of the papers on, on, um, Thursday. And, and honestly, me, you know, I'm kinda proud of it when I, I, I do embrace it. Um, and I don't, I don't wanna sit back and when I got the, I'm not on the desegregated Connecticut, um, email list or whatever, but someone phoned me and said, it, it, I've got nothing against them, you know, I don't support the bill, but the decent good sent out a thing, we have a bill and it's ten twenty-four and this one business and I was like, you know. You're working this for six months.
Everybody gets fifteen seconds to pat themselves on the back.
No.
And the, the last off, the last offshoot of this, um, and I, and I gotta end this soon because I really promised to get out of here. Uh, and we are going over load is, um, I, I did register to testify. You had to register to testify by three o'clock or ten o'clock on Sunday. You know, so my name was on the registry list. Um, what happens is you register by, I think, three o'clock on Sunday and then supposedly they pick a lottery of numbers, three hundred and forty or three hundred and forty-one people registered. Uh, then they do a lottery and there's this thing, you can see time and, you know, I don't know what it is. And so I was number two hundred and seven. Um, and, and, you know, I said, oh, okay, you know, three minutes apiece. But then the same thing I did with the guy with the, with the gal and say, I said, three minutes apiece, I'm two hundred and seven. That's ten hours and twenty-five minutes, you know, starts at ten o'clock in the morning plus ten hours. I want to speak at eight thirty on Sunday night. You know, my number kinda sorta came up this morning at, at nine forty-eight AM this morning, which is twenty-four, twenty-three hours and, and forty-eight minutes later. Um, and the woman that was supposedly talking, talking in front of me, um, she went on and, you know, I was left at the altar. Um, so I never got to testify. Um, Jamie Stevenson did testify.
He was thirteen. She was thirteen.
Her number was nineteen.
Nineteen, midnight.
But what they, what they landed up doing, and I, if it's too much information, but I really want the public to know this too, is, um, they take the elected officials and the non-elected officials and they blend them. So it goes, you know, one, then a non-elected guy, then two, then a non-elected guy. So because you were nineteen, you're actually not nineteen, you're actually fifty-eight. And then they start skipping around and it's also not three minutes. The, the testifier is allowed to speak for three minutes. That every single person on the commission or the committee, which is like all six of you guys, or all six of us guys, um, is allowed to question the witness for five minutes. So it's three minutes plus, and I don't know how many people on the committee, let's say there's.
Eight.
Right, so it's three minutes that I get to talk and then there's five minutes times eight people, which is forty minutes. So it's, you basically talk it for forty-five minutes. So when I did my quick math, you know, I was off by three hundred percent. Like today, I was off by, you know, fifty percent with that guy with, with the gallons. You know, so that's how that works. The, the, you know, a lot of people did speak, you know, I, 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 I did pay attention to a lot of it while I was working in the office, but it takes a ton of time. Um, I, where it's gonna shake out and not the funniest idea. And where it goes forward, I'm really not a politician, but you know, there was a lot of effort and there's a lot of people on it and it's a crazy, it's a, it's crazy times. But I want you to, all Darian, general public to know that their planning zoning commission and their planning zone staff is on top of this stuff as we can. The next piece of this puzzle is, we wanna put this, these maybe two letters now on an agenda and have a public meeting, hearing on it, like we talked about back in October. I think that public hearing, it might be in October, in August. No, which is, um, April, in April.
Yeah.
Where we got a public hearing. If one person shows up and nobody shows up, at least we have a public hearing. If people wanna be on one side of the argument, the other side, sir, that's fine by me. Um, but I wanna put it to public in my heart of hearts, but also take it to the, I'd like to take it to the RTM. I have to have another conversation with Seth about it, um, but it's gotta go to the first electorate first and this first electorate consent. We can't send it to you.
But like, the public can still give testimony, right? It's still a bill. It's just a bill right now that's been raised before the committee, the planning and development committee. It still has to go before the House and then to the.
Has to come out of committee. If, if it doesn't come out of committee, it dies on the vine.
Exactly. So like, this is not just because that one day of testimony ended does not mean people's voices are not, it's like, I think what I took away from this summer and this spring, it's like, people's voices should be heard and I don't want any person or resident to ever feel disenfranchised. And so there is still opportunity, right? Like we had deadlines as a commission, right? Because letters and like staffing and deadlines, right, to get written testimony in. But like people's own testimony can still be submitted to the representatives and to the committee at any point while the bill is still alive or even when it dies, just their opinion on the issues. I think that's an important point. And my last point, I'm sorry, I know, I will shut up and promise. I'm just really proud.
I don't know what, babe.
In that we are very, we are a partisan commission, but I really do love, and it warms my heart in a, in a real way, that we are very non-political with each other.
You said non-partisan commission or bipartisan. That's all.
I love that you're crying because it is really nice and I will second that as, uh, as, as, yes, I will second that, especially on this issue because.
Like, we just, I respect each other and like are not political about. Like, we just, I respect each other, and like, are not political about issues, we're just like, all volunteers, and just respect everyone's time, and that everyone's working really hard, and being genuine, and ethical, and giving their time to the town, and not being like, political monsters, and I just love it. I just really respect this board, this commission, very much.
I mean, I, 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 after what you said, the only thing I, I've said a thousand times, it's like lights at the high school, lights at the high school's not partisan. It's, you know, there's no, Republicans don't want lights, and Democrats, no, it's, it's nonpartisan. So, anyway, that's my report. Um, the only other thing that was a little bit, is, this is the CCM testimony. Darian's name is on the CCM testimony. There was a little bit of an issue relative to that. I don't know what the final conclusion was, but CCM put something in also.
When you raised it, and Barb, you can read all of her testimony about it.
Yeah, I, I think Jamie talked about that.
Yes, she did.
Great, but it was, uh,
Yeah, so anyway, that's my report. Um, anyone ever asks, wants to ask me any questions or comments, you're gonna do it over the phone, or by, or, or some other means, um, but if, I mean, email, I still type with two fingers. Um, that said, in S, um, oh, update on pending GSA Legislation Commission and Public Testimony. We just kind of sort of talked about that, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's.
Um, I, I would say that April sixth, uh, could be a potential date for that public hearing, if you want to move forward with that. Notice requirements that, that we would need to get out from our office, and, uh, we're now up against, uh, those notice requirements.
How, what's the, so, so.
So, we, we can, we can go ahead and make that decision now, with respect to, uh, holding that hearing on the sixth.
Yeah.
That's, um,
Yeah.
That would also likely be a deliberation night, uh, regarding seven eleven.
The first night of deliberation, that's, yeah, I mean, we're gonna break that application into
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Micro pieces.
So, that, yeah, that, that would likely be the first night of deliberations.
Is, uh, April sixth just, just follows Easter. I, I'm, I'm not a school parent anymore. Is that a, a week off at all, or no?
Not for us. That would be logical.
It's, it's actually the following week, so we, we're, we're good on the sixth. The week after was, would be the, uh, problematic.
Yeah. So I, I, I would, I would like to put it on the agenda for April sixth, because we don't have a mission meeting on April thirteenth, and then it would land, the next one is April twentieth, and that just seems too far away. A month from now. Everyone's gonna forget about it, so, can we, is that everyone agrees, put this on the, for bug being April sixth? I got a thumbs up, I got a thumbs up, and I got George Riley saying, yeah. George is going, George, give me, he give me a, like, yeah, alright, great, so there you go.
Yeah, I, I, I hope it's still, um, you know, a lot, or, you know, I, I wouldn't want to waste our time if it has died by then, but, um, anyway, we won't know.
Dies in committee by then, trust me, it's gonna come back. I mean, I listened to those senators and, and representatives, and, and they were, you know, they wanted to negotiate. I don't know how you negotiate, but
There's, what?
It's, it's not gonna die.
Derivative bills that are just breakups of the big bill, so like.
Okay, then, our next meeting is, our next meeting is March twenty-third, which is a week from today, or two weeks from today.
That's a week from today.
Week from today, then another week after that is April sixth. This is special means, we can't entertain anyone's business. Um, I think most, I, I lost the bet, because it's eleven oh five. I would entertain a motion to close.
Broke the sacrosanct rule, so.
What's that?
Oh, it's almost. Remember when we went to seven thirty, right?
Yeah, exactly, I, I.
I contributed to the delay, so, no complaint.
I want to get voted out. Um, entertain a motion to close. George Riley, seconded by Jim Rand, is on the scoreboard, all in favor.
My motion that we celebrate St. Patrick's Day by closing.
That's, just for the record, Larry, I will be in, um, the DWR bar at, at Kennedy Airport tomorrow morning at about seven thirty AM. Drop off at college.
Irish whiskey tastes good any hour of the day.
This conference is no longer being recorded.